At this time, I will reconvene into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for August 17th, 2023, beginning at 7:32. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. One or more trustees may participate in this meeting via video conference call. A quorum of the Board of Trustees will be physically present at the administration building. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Our board meetings are open to the public and we welcome your input. We welcome everyone and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting and we have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be tolerated. Anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave or be escorted by the security officer. We welcome civil input, but we insist that we remain respectful and civil. Thank you for cooperation. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Ms. McMurro in leading us in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And now, if you would please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. The first item on our agenda is open forum for agenda items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on this agenda are required to register at www.aisd.net. Board meeting speaker, no later than 3:00 PM the day of the board meeting. Ms. Forsberg, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding agenda items?
No ma'am, we have no registered speakers this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Forsberg. Next, we will consider administrative ratifications and appointments. Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Fowler. I'd like to recommend that the board ratify the appointment of the individuals discussed in closed session for assistant principal for Bowie High School and assistant principals for Dunn, Larson, and Williams Elementary.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Do I have a motion?
No motion.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Ms. Richardson. I'm sleepy tonight, I'm sorry. And a second by Mr. Chapa. Any discussion? All right, please vote. Motion carries in the affirmative. Thank you.
All right, so I'd like to invite each of you to stand as we recognize as I introduce you. And we're going to start off with the new assistant principal for Bowie High School, and that is Kristi Taylor. So Kristi Taylor is not foreign to Bowie. She was a ninth through 12th grade social studies teacher and then was an aspire assistant principal at Workman Junior High. She earned her bachelor's degree in psychology from Cameron University, and she went to SMU for her master's of education, educational leadership. Congratulations, Ms. Taylor. And the new assistant principal for Dunn Elementary is Katrina Ashford. Ms. Ashford has lots of experience. She was a third grade English teacher, inclusion teacher at Sellers Elementary, and then moved to West Park as a kindergarten teacher. And then she went back to Sellers and served as a second grade, third grade, fourth grade teacher, and also was the campus testing coordinator and a dyslexia pullout teacher. She also worked at the Kinder Prep Academy and then also as a kindergarten teacher and dyslexia teacher and coach in Kennedale. She had earned her bachelor's degree in social work at UTA, and then she went to Tarleton State University to earn her master of education in educational administration. Congratulations, Ms. Ashford. The new assistant, the new, the new assistant principal at Larson Elementary is Carl Ritter. Carl, Mr. Ritter actually served as an athletic coach and a history teacher, a seventh grade history teacher in Midway. He also was a history teacher in Lorena ISD at the high school, and also served as a seventh grade Texas history teacher at Methodist Children's Home Charter School. He was an assistant principal and instructional specialist in Waco ISD, and at Waco Charter School, served as an assistant principal and a principal. He earned his Bachelor of Arts degree in international studies at Baylor University, and stayed at Baylor to earn his Master of Education Curriculum Instruction. So congratulations, Mr. Ritter. And the new assistant principal at Williams Elementary is Angie, Angie Gospie? Or Davis? Davis, there we go, I have two here, sorry. Angie Davis. Alrighty, so Ms. Davis actually was an eighth grade social studies teacher at Young Junior High and an instructional coach, and she earned her Bachelor's of Arts degree in history at UNT, and then went to UTA for her Master of Education Educational Leadership. Congratulations, Angie, we're happy to have you.
To our people that have been ratified, thank you for accepting your new roles. Please remember that you were selected for your positions because of your skills and your knowledge. AISD is fortunate to have you, and we hope you have a fabulous school year. Feel free to stop out in the hallway, and we have an AISD backdrop, and so get lots of pictures with your friends and family. And thank you again, we appreciate you stepping up into these roles, and we know you're going to do a great job. So thank you. We also know it's a school night, so if you need to go, we will certainly understand. Thank you. Next on our agenda are action items, and we have two. Dr. Wertz?
So action item A is for the board to consider an education savings account, or commonly known as vouchers, resolution.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Are there any trustees with questions or discussions? Ms. McMurro, I will call upon you to take the lead on this.
Thank you, President Fowler. As a board, we bring this resolution today as a special state legislative session on education draws near. And I do want to thank our governance committee specifically, David Willbanks, LeAnn Haynes, for their help in crafting this. And I want to thank our whole board, who was very active during and even before the 88th regular session, and communicating with our delegation on all of our legislative priorities, particularly the idea of an education savings account or a voucher mechanism. And once again, we will be calling on our local delegation to oppose any legislation that implements education savings accounts, otherwise known as vouchers. We also want to ensure that we are doing our part as a board to educate our families and our community, and that they are fully informed on what the true implications of a voucher system would be on Arlington ISD and our state as a whole. On the surface, it's often assumed that a voucher system provides parents with more school choice, but the reality is vouchers, including even if they're called education savings accounts, in other states have not led to improved student outcomes. Other states have seen the cost of voucher programs grow exponentially, and that's a burden on taxpayers. For example, Arizona's voucher program costs next year will be over $900 million, considerably more than originally projected, or currently budgeted even. In Texas, although the initial proposed appropriation is $500 million, the net cost to the state is expected to reach $1 billion per year by 2028. As more students reach kindergarten age and become eligible for vouchers, the cost to taxpayers will continue to surge. Vouchers will drain resources from public schools at a time when schools are already facing teacher shortages and higher inflation. And it is for these reasons and many more that our board brings forth this resolution, which I'd like to share at this time. This is our resolution on vouchers, education savings accounts, taxpayer savings grants, and other mechanisms that reduce public education funding. Whereas Article 7, Section 1 of the Texas Constitution requires that the Texas Legislature establish and make suitable provision for the support and maintenance of an efficient system of public free schools, whereas Texas Public School Districts accept every student, whereas education savings accounts and other voucher schemes give private schools, not parents, the right to choose. Whereas Arlington ISD believes in the Texas Foundation School Program, and that programming supporting special education students in our public schools should be properly funded. Whereas Texas parents who accept a voucher could deprive themselves of important parental rights outlined in the Texas Education Code and federal law, especially protections provided in the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, otherwise known as IDEA, for students receiving special education services. Whereas Texas public schools adhere to state mandated academic and financial accountability standards, whereas private schools are not required to meet the same academic standards as public schools, and they are not required to report test results, graduation rates, and other performance measures to the public. Whereas Arlington ISD hires only bachelors, masters, or doctoral degree holding teachers deemed certified and highly qualified by the State Board of Education. Whereas school choice already exists in Texas via public school districts, charter schools, inter-district, and intra-district transfers, home schools, virtual schools, and private schools. Whereas Arlington ISD already promotes school choice through a rich variety of learning pathways, including the Fine Arts and Dual Language Academies, World Language Academy, Leadership Academy, Elementary and Secondary STEM Academies, Early College High Schools, Pathway and Technology Early College High Schools, otherwise known as PTEC, International Baccalaureate IB Programs, and over 40 Career and Technical Education CTE opportunities. Whereas education savings accounts and similar voucher schemes eliminate public accountability of schools and tax dollars. Whereas a taxpayer-funded voucher program would reduce the amount of state funds available for all schools, harming many rural Texas communities where families have few, if any, private school options. And whereas using tax dollars to pay for tuition at private and religious schools would grow into a costly entitlement program. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees is committed to supporting both learning and parental choice, and calls on the Texas Legislature to reject any diversion of public dollars to private entities in the form of education savings accounts and similar voucher schemes. And at this time, I would like to move that the board approve this resolution that I just read.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. So we have a motion for Ms. McMurro. Do I have a second?
I second.
A second for Mr. Willbanks? Please vote. Let me, before we move on, I just want to say thank you to the governance committee, chaired by Ms. McMurro and members LeAnn Haynes and David Willbanks. You all have spent a lot of time and a lot of thought in putting together this voucher, and on behalf of the district, we appreciate it. So I want to thank you for your time and expertise on this. And as you stated, AISD is opposed to the voucher system, and we just appreciate y'all working on this and bringing it to the public's attention. Thank you. Too late, she's in.
I did just want to thank the board one more time and add that for anyone who's watching staff, community, whether it's live or later on, this special session is predicted to start in October. We're not sure about that, but it is not too early to contact your legislators and also share your sentiments on your thoughts about this type of legislation. And our part, part of the reason why we drafted this voucher was to really make sure we're doing our part as community members and as a board to educate our community as to what implications this would really have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro, very well stated. We move on to action item B. Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Fowler. Action item B is for the board to consider the proposed termination and/or non-renewal of John Adam Wambles' term contract as discussed in closed session.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Dr. Raich?
Yes, thank you, President Fowler. I move to propose termination and/or non-renewal of John Adam Wambles' 2023-2024 term contract.
Thank you, Dr. Raich. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Chapa. So I have a motion from Dr. Raich and a second from Mr. Chapa. Motion carries, thank you. We next move to discussion, action item A. Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Fowler. So as you know, for the past few years, we've talked about excess local revenue or recapture. And last month, Arlington ISD received notification from the Texas Education Agency that identified our district as Chapter 49. And so tonight, Ms. Moss and the Finance Department will share some details and options for recapture. Ms. Moss?
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Good evening, President Fowler, trustees. As Dr. Wertz said, we've been talking about and discussing recapture, I guess, the last couple of years since I've been here. We talked about it a little bit when we adopted the budget back in June as well. So we knew that this was coming. We actually probably should have been identified as recapture for the 22-23 year. We amended the budget as such, and as he said, we finally got our letter this year on July 14th. So now we're going to take the next steps as being identified as a recaptured district. Of course, you know the background of recapture, we've talked about it a lot, but I shared that information on the screen for you. It's just simply our taxable values are going up and our student enrollment is going down, creating the recapture situation that we are facing right now. And for those who are listening, what is recapture? And it's now identified as excess local revenue in Chapter 49. We have been a Chapter 48 district, and now we are considered a Chapter 49 district. And so I just wanted to share out the timeline for you. On July 14th, again, we received that letter from DEA. On September 1, there is a deadline for the district to submit our intent, or how are we going to pay recapture? We've talked about that in the past, too, how we have several options, and there's a slide I'll share here in a minute with that, that shows what those options are. September 1, we're also required to, the board is required to approve that Chapter 41 attendance credit agreement. On January 15th is the deadline for us to submit some information from our CAD, our appraisal district, and then September of '24 is when we really net it all out. Once we determine where we land for the year, that's when it will be netted out. And so again, the options, we've gone over this before. I'll just start with option 1. That's where districts will consolidate with another. So Arlington would consolidate with District A is what option 1 allows us to do. Option 2 is the detachment of property. So some of our taxpayers that are in the Arlington boundaries would be detached and added to another district's boundaries. Option 4, we would contract to educate non-resident students with another district. And option 5 is tax-based consolidation with another district as well. As you see, we are looking at option 3, bringing that to the board tonight. That is where we purchase attendance credit from the state, and that simply is the dollars that we receive, or state revenue that we receive, will be netted by the recapture amount. When we adopted the budget, we had six, we were looking at or estimating about 6.2 million. After the MCR, that amount looks to be more like about 3 million. Ms. Martin will share some of that information in her presentation here in a few minutes. But option 3 is what we're bringing to the board. 98 to 99% of districts use option, option 3. And so with that, administration recommends approval of the agreement of the, for the purchase of attendance credits and the delegation of the authority to obligate the school district under Chapter 49 to the superintendent. And just a note on what that delegation is, we have to submit this electronically to DEA, so Dr. Wertz has a login that he would use to actually upload this information along with the minutes from this board meeting. And I'm glad to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any trustees with questions or comments? Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Fowler. I prepared to make a motion, but I do have a couple of questions for you, Ms. Moss. So is it, when is the last time that the formulas related to recapture were reset by the state?
I can't tell you the exact year, but it's been several years, several years, and it does need to be adjusted. The formulas do need to be adjusted.
And if those formulas had been adjusted for inflation, do you believe that Arlington ISD would be in recapture?
I do not. I will say that the compression has helped a little bit with recapture. Like I mentioned before, it's brought it down, but I'm still, you know, estimating that we could see a 30% increase in, in recapture year, year over year.
And is it true that the state uses recapture funds to balance the state budget?
I will tell you what I'm aware of. I think that once they adopt the budget, they put an amount in their budget for recapture, and once it settles out, say if they put $1.5 billion in there for recapture, and they actually end up collecting $2 billion, that does not go back into the school districts. It goes into the state fund.
So I'll editorialize. So the state is essentially balancing the state budget on the backs of school districts in part by not updating the recapture formulas.
Correct.
Which increases burden on us as well.
Correct. And one more comment, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, please.
One more comment I want to make sure that the public is aware of, is this is not something that the district wants to do? I think we've had some citizens that have been concerned about that. This is something that we're required by statute to do.
Right, and it's not just a simple matter of, well, if we slash some, some funding or some spending somewhere that we could just, you know, cut our way out of this, it's we're obligated to pay this amount.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Moss. At this time, I move for the 2023-2024 school year, we delegate contractual authority to obligate the school district under Texas Education Code, TEC Section 11.1511(c)(4), to the superintendent solely for the purpose of obligating the district under TEC Section 48.257 and TEC Chapter 49, Subchapters A and D, and the rules adopted by the Commissioner of Education is authorized under TEC Section 49.006. This includes approval of the agreement for the purchase of attendance credit, netting Chapter 48 funding.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. So we have a motion by Mr. Chapa. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is that Dr. Raich? Second from Dr. Raich. We'll just go for that. Motion carries, thank you very much. Well, now, ready for discussion, action B. Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Fowler. Tonight, we bring for your consideration Competitive Sealed Proposal Number 23-43 for Martin High School and Glassby Field additions and renovation projects. We're inviting Mr. Horn, our Assistant Superintendent of Facility Services, to give a brief presentation to answer questions.
Good evening, President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Wertz. So this evening, I was asked to break this out for you, and so I'm happy to do so. I've got a brief presentation, and during the presentation, I'll, I'll give a little bit of information about the bid for the project, and then I'm going to revert back to the realignment plan to give a little bit of further, a little bit more information to our newer board members and to remind us of how we ended up where we are today. So let's just jump right into this. So this, I won't read all of this to you, you have the information, but I wanted to give you a reference for, as to how this project fit within the timeline following the voting for, or the vote for the bond referendum. And so you can see, we began this project early on. There were a number of things that took place that, that pushed it back further. A big part of that was just the PD process that we go through with the city of Arlington. Originally, we probably wouldn't have had to do that, but we had, we changed the height of the light poles and the press box, and that pushed it through plan development. So naturally, it pushed us back a bit. And then following, and then finally, we're here today, August 17th, with our recommendation. I thought also it'd be helpful for you to see kind of what we do, what we go through with our proposal process. Typically, and I mentioned this the other day to the committee, that typically, this is about a two to three month process for Mr. Parkes and I and our facility planning and construction group. With inflation the way it is today and the volatility in the construction market, manufacturers don't hold their price as long as they used to, because it's just too volatile. Steel prices can, can adjust or go up or go down violently, and so, as well as glass and concrete and so forth and so on. So we now have about 30 days. Usually, we can stretch that to about 45. So we've really had to compress our process for, for the evaluating proposals and bringing those to you all for your consideration. So without going through every single step, I just thought it'd be helpful for you to see kind of what we, what we do, what we do for each and every project. And then this is the Martin and Glassby Field proposal breakdown. It's just a small piece of some information you have in your packet that I provide to you, and when I show you the breakdown of our alternates and value engineering, we didn't have any value engineering on this one, on this particular project, value engineering being the ability for us to perhaps substitute products within the package to lessen the price. And a good example, and one that I used the other day, was the conductor we use to provide power to one of our buildings, or in this case, a stadium. We, we like to use copper. Copper's very expensive. We can usually substitute aluminum conductor, and it will cut our costs substantially. There's some minor maintenance upkeep that we have to deal with within our team, but it's not, but it's not enough that it would, that we would say we have to stay with copper. So those are kind of, that's just one of the items. We can also change, we can change thicknesses of concrete. We can even ask our architect or engineers to adjust steel dimensions and things like that. There's a lot of ways we can value engineer projects. This project, though, is a little more difficult because it's a stadium, and stadiums are simply, as I mentioned the other day to the committee, it's concrete, it's glass, it's aluminum, it's steel, some of our most expensive building materials, and there's a lot of it. And there's just not a lot of opportunity to be able to, to cut pricing or cut our pricing back. So we always break it out the way you see it on the screen, with our base bid being the first number. And then we, we ask for our architects or work with architects to develop alternates, or additive alternates, as we call them. And this allows us to get really good concrete, no pun intended, pricing for, for items that we think we may want to consider recommending or rejecting as we go forward. And so that first item that you see there, the alternate number one for seating, we looked first at matching the seating count that we had at Cravens, for example, which is the stadium with the least amount of seating, although it does have chairback seating. On the home side, it still has the least number of seats. Although it does have chairback seating on the home side, it still has the least number of seats. So we wanted to, to start with that as our base. And then, and so the base bid has 8,449 seats in it. Then the alternate adds back seats, chairback seats on the home side, and, and carries us for Martin, or pardon me, I should say Glasby. It takes, I still do that, so pardon me. I'm used to saying Martin. So, but at Glasby, it would take us to 10,000, roughly 10,399 seats, I believe, at 18 inches in width. And so if we, if, for example, I leave the seating in the base bid, or I put that in the base bid, and then we decide we want to take it out, when the contractor takes that out of the bid or reduces their value, they don't give us dollar for dollar. So they might give us 50% of the value of those seats if we take them out. To the contrary, if I don't put them in, and then we ask them later to give us a price to add them, and we bring them back to use a change order, for example, they might cost us two or three times what they're worth. So it's always better for us to, to put them in the, to put our base number in the base bid and ask for an additive alternate. Then we get accurate pricing, and you can decide whether you want to, to accept that or not, and based on our recommendation. So that's the, that's the seating explanation. And so that's good value for the number of seats that, that we're adding back into the project. The stair screens and, and alternate number two, we're still going to have stair screening between us and the neighbors to the west. But this, but we, we could cut out some dollars by not having the screening on the north and south sides and on the face, you know, towards the field. Most of the time, when you go to stadiums, you see the stairwells on either side of the press boxes, and it, nobody pays that much attention to it. It was a nice to have, but it's not worth spending the extra money, in our opinion. The solar car building and alternate number three was, was, was asked of us to put this in, to see what kind of numbers we might get, to see if it was possible and whether or not we could afford it. This was never actually in the bond program. It was never something that I had developed with the team back when we did this work in 2018, leading up to the vote. But it, it was a good way to get a number and see whether or not we could afford it. Given the numbers that we're at, we just don't feel like it's something we should recommend to you. We feel like we could do that same thing within the existing industrial arts laboratories on the campus and do it at a much lesser price. So that's why we're, we're suggesting to reject that. And then alternate number four, this also is an item that we asked to put in. It was not originally in the scope, but this is the restroom bank that's immediately off the grand lobby that serves both the gymnasiums and the auditorium. And so that, that particular set of restrooms gets more use probably than any other set of restrooms on the campus. And it's where our general public goes most of the time. So we felt it was necessary to get a number to clean those up and make them, to improve them. And so that's a very good number for, for what we have there. Those are really large restrooms. And so we've suggested that, or we've recommended that we accept that. The girls' P E item on number five is, is in fact the girls' P E locker room. And we've worked, Mr. Parkos and, and his team have worked with our athletic administration in the campus to identify that as a way to improve athletic facilities for the girls, in particular dance, cheer, and girls' wrestling. So we would take the existing girls' P E locker room that's larger, break that down into three spaces, and improve that and renovate it for the girls. This will create a great bit more equity for the girls on the campus like the boys have. And then the weight room is, while it's a weight, well, this is the old weight room, not our new weight room in our MAC, right? So this is the old weight room that's on the west side of the campus, near the Fine Arts area. There's some athletic equipment outside that, to give you some, some idea of where the positioning of that is. Immediately inside, but underneath the, the bleachers of the gym there is where this weight room used to sit, or still sits, I should say. It's, it was a weight room. It's taken a lot of abuse over time. The flooring has deteriorated significantly. We would have to repour that, do a lot of work to the walls, the lighting, and just generally improve it. But it's, it's slated to become the girls' varsity basketball locker room, their training, pardon me, their, I've, let me see if I've written it down. The, the offices and team room and locker room, I should say, pardon me. And so that again starts to bring back that equity for the girls' sports there on the campus. And so while most of the campuses, when we did, I shouldn't say most, all other, the other five campuses, when we did the MACs, there was a great, there was a great deal of shift to create girls' locker rooms with the old locker rooms that the boys had. At Martin, it didn't, that didn't happen so much, so we're addressing that now. And so that's the breakdown of the proposal, and you can see the total numbers at the bottom. Both of those carried down and then across to a total of 45,578. And we bid this as a package. We often do this to get better value. If we were to split this off, for example, both those projects would probably increase in value. So, but by packaging things, especially when the projects are close like these are, right on the same campus, our contract, we can have one contractor do the work. I don't have two mobilizations by two different contractors and that sort of thing. It's a great deal of savings by doing this. Oftentimes, we can even do this with, with schools that are in close proximity, like a Crouch, Anderson, and Patrick. So if you remember, when we built the bond, we did a lot of packaging to try to, to try to achieve that value. And then I, I had a, this slide changed a bit for the committee, so I think, Ms. Mur, Ms. McMurray, you asked to include the initial bid. So I've done that for you. So I'll start with that. So we, we bid this project, and it's in your packet, but we bid this originally on December 7th, 2022, prior, or, or following COVID. So our numbers are, are still greater than we anticipated originally. But when we got, when we received these numbers and we, we saw 15 million, honestly, Mr. Parkos and I said, this is unacceptable. There's prob, there's a couple of reasons why. Number one, this is after COVID. We saw probably between 35 and 40% inflation in construction at that, by that time. And so this, I think, I think the value from where we were with our, with our original bond budget that I estimated, and I, I can get into that later, too, probably represented somewhere around 37%, 35 to 37%. So, but we just felt like this was too high. We felt like we could go back to the, to our architect and ask them to, to help us to reduce or refine scope in some places where it didn't hurt us, such as cutting back some of our concrete, changing, like I said earlier, those, those feeds, those conductor feeds that, one of the items that we did take was to go to aluminum feeds versus copper feeds. So we were trying to find big chunks of money that we could pull out of this project to get it, to make sure that it bid lesser, at a lesser amount on a future bid. Further, we, we don't always like to bid projects at Christmas, and we took a chance on this because we were ready to go. And we felt like if we got it out prior to the holiday, maybe right after Thanksgiving, we would get good numbers. It's a, it's a risk. It didn't, I don't think it paid off quite, quite like we thought. And so we didn't get as much coverage on that bid, and that probably had a little bit of effect, of an effect on it, too, also, carrying that number up. But overall, we just didn't feel comfortable. So we suggested to Dr. Cavassos at the time that we reject the bids. We let it cool off. It's always best whenever you do something like that to wait between four and six months because our contractors, there, there's a little trepidation or some fear about, well, what did they do? Why are they bidding this again, right? And so it's better for us to, to clean up the package, drawing package, make the changes we want, give it some time, and put it back out. And so we did that on July 13th of 2023, and you can see with some minor refinements, like we mentioned, some value engineering, if you will, and, and a little bit more, we're a little more aggressive about going after our, our bidders and really trying to encourage some people to, to bid. This also was bid right after, if you remember, about three weeks after we bid Carter. So, and I, and if you remember, I brought to you at the time, I told you that we were going to wait a little bit because the people bidding Carter and the people bidding this project were the same. And, and sometimes if there's two big projects out on the street like this, they won't bid both. They'll bid one or the other, or they'll bid one and wait to see if they got that one. If not, then they'll go hard after the next one, right? So I think that all of that paid off for us, and while it's still over, there's about a seven and a half million dollar, you know, reduction in that overage. And so I think it, it did work in that sense. So now, here's where I'll switch back to the realignment plan and just, and this, if you remember, this was a part of a much larger presentation that I made back in June, or we finalized in June of 2022. And I have the date there. It's June 28th, if you recall. And we brought to you really three pretty simple points. The first point I, that I made was I would suggest not shutting down. You know, a lot of districts, when they go into something like this, they go, they kind of, like a turtle, they kind of pull into their shell, and they stop down, and that's really, in some cases, the worst thing you can do because it's only going to get, it's only going to grow, the, the inflationary values and so forth. You, if you keep moving, you can continue to pivot and adjust, right? But when you stop, you have to get started again, and it's very expensive. So that was our first recommendation. Proceed with all the bond projects. Continue forward, but let's adjust on the fly. And so our second point was to complete those bond projects that were currently under construction. So I'm going to switch to the next slide, and then I'll come back. At that time, these projects were in some form or another under construction. And until two days ago, we were still, you know, effectively under construction at Barry and Thornton, right? Technically. We, we now realize, we now know that we, we successfully opened those projects and, and on time, just like we planned. And so Barry and Thornton are on that, are on the screen, and, and they've just opened recently. Crowe was really the first domino for us when we stacked all the dominos up and got ready to push them forward. You know, Crowe was our first project in the East Arlington Plan that we had to, that we had to be successful with to make sure that we could adjust boundaries and move kiddos around, right? And then Gunn, of course, while not in East Arlington, that was a significant project. And as I mentioned to the committee the other day, we, right out of the box, we added a pretty significant amount of money to that project to, to bring in our sixth grade from Corey and Jones so that we could, so that we could create some space in those elementary-aged Fine Arts and Dual Language Academies so we could get more kids in, right? Grow that program there. And then allow those, those students to matriculate up into Gunn. And so we added a significant, over 100 and, probably 140,000 square feet to that campus. So, but, but again, a great project, and it's worked out just as we planned. Of course, the Jones Academy, that was an early, early project as well, along with Crowe on the north side, where we added 10 classrooms for the pre-K kindergarten and a, and a storm shelter and gym addition. So that was really the model that we had for, for Crowe and for all the other schools that followed. And then, of course, Shackelford was a, was still ongoing at that time, but it was, the Shackelford Junior High School was just more of an interior renovation, taking down some old thin walls that were just kind of popped up. That was an old open concept campus and when it was built. And when they closed it up, it really wasn't done correctly. And so we built, rebuilt that more substantially on the inside and improved it and created more access for handicapped and so forth, students and teachers. And of course, I mentioned Thornton already, and then Webb, we opened it mid-year this past year, intended to open it in August, but, but it was pushed back a little bit. We had a very aggressive timeline on that project. And, but still, I, I, like I mentioned to the committee the other day, I think we kind of got to experience two brand new, or two first days, right? One in January and one this August. So those are the projects that we were under construction with at the time and that I suggested that we continue moving forward without stopping. I'll go back to the third point. The third point was to begin looking at all of our other projects and prioritize those projects and give you the opportunity to tell us what you thought we should continue forward with without making significant cuts or adjustments, even if it might come in over budget. And so, so I'll shift now to that list, and here's that list that we agreed to at that time. And I'll hit a couple of high points, but on that list, at top of the list, of course, was Anderson. That was a complete HVAC renovation project. We pulled that forward because of a critical need. It, it actually accelerated itself. We were not able to keep that building cooler than about 78 degrees in the hotter months, like last spring. And so we felt it was necessary to move that forward, and so we, we worked quickly to bring you an item back in the fall, pardon me, in the spring to, to begin planning for that, and that was successful. Now we're able to cool that building and to a nice icy 70, 71 degrees if they need it. So it worked out great. But you see other projects like the Arlington High School addition for the Fine Arts and Dual Language Academy. That project is underway. That one was over, over budget as well, but, but it was, it was close or close enough that we felt pretty good about it. Bailey was a bit over as well, but, but we did some significant work at, doing some significant work at Bailey. And then, of course, the Carter project actually came in where we thought it would, so we were very fortunate there. But we had a very aggressive plan. We also went three stories. That, that three-story building saved us, saved us a lot of money because it's, our footprint's not spread out. So when you can start stacking, there's still cost involved in the materials, but it's, there's savings. And so you being open to a three-story plan helped us a lot. And then we've got Cravens Field, and I'll go over to the other side, Wildman Field. Both those are, are essentially designed, V L K, our architect has done that work. But, but we're waiting for this project tonight, the Glasby Field project. We need to make sure that we finish one stadium and have, that we will have that stadium and possibly the, the lease on, on the stadium that we're using outside the district so that when we take those two down, we, we still have two stadiums to use. And we'll, we originally planned to have them all kind of falling in line, one behind the other. We've worked with athletics to come up with a plan that when we finish Glasby, we can take Wildman and Cravens down at the same time and, and move forward with those. And then we have projects on there like the Diaper Career Techno, Career and Technology, Career and Technical Center. Martin is on here as well. We're wrapping up Phase Two and Phase Three of the playground projects now. And the P D C, you've probably seen a lot of the work when you were down at the luncheon. We've opened up the landscape a lot. We're still working on that plan, but a lot of that's taking, we're taking, doing some of that in-house with our own team. But we've corrected all the issues with a lot of the pavement near the front door and so forth. And we'll continue to do a little bit more of that work to correct the drives out front and, and get rid of some of what we call bird baths, you know, all the standing water and so forth. Standing water deteriorates our foundations and our concrete, so that's why we do that. And then finally, we, we also have tonight for you on, on your agenda, the approval of the architect for the Security and Transportation Center addition. And so that project is, is quite critical. That's to build, in a sense, a new training center for our security and our transportation teams, but also to give them restrooms, adequate restrooms, and then build a command center for our security team so that we can bring all of our monitoring services in-house for our fire alarms and, and that sort of thing. So that's that group of projects. All of the other projects in the district still will have work that goes on. But those projects will refine scope to the things that are, the way that we set this up to do the most critical, the higher priority items. So anything regarding security would be done. The new key system for those buildings would be done. Playgrounders are already being done for a lot of those elementaries that receive a smaller amount of work. But then also things like roofing, if there's a roofing project or a chiller or boiler project, things that keep our students comfortable and allow them to, to be comfortable when they're in the learning environment. Those types of high priority items would be the things we would continue forward with. Things that might not be so critical, we, we may be able to stretch flooring out a little further and go to another future bond. So it's things like those finishes that we might reduce down, or, or we might do smaller parts of them. Instead of doing an entire school of carpet, with carpet, we might do the, the oldest wing and then salvage what we have in the other wings that might have been replaced at, at a more recent time period. So, so we liked, we'd love to do things wholesale, but sometimes we, we can't, right? And that's, so that's the, some of the hard choices we have to make as we kind of wind this bond down. And so with that, we actually, I'll, I'll actually go to the next slide, and that is our, pardon me. I may have messed that up, Frank. Our closing slide for questions. So if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Do we have any trustees with questions or? Ms. Haynes?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Horn, for your presentation and the work that you put into putting this together for us and that your team does for putting together the bond program and all the work in the construction and the bidding. I especially want to highlight and applaud you guys for recognizing the inequities that exist for our female athletes at Martin. The facilities and the locker rooms that they are using currently are in a pretty bad state, and that is one of the concerns I get a lot from parents. So I know that they are going to be very happy to hear that this long overdue project is happening.
Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President. Thank you, President Fowler. Mr. Horn, I had some questions about the, the seating. So I, I vaguely remember a discussion last summer that the, the capacity was over 10,000, and then when we went back out for the rebid, it went down. And now the proposal is to put it back in. Is there some reason we keep trying to get it back over 10,000 for capacity?
Yeah, I think for the most part, you know, we, it was, originally, it was, it was designed at 10,400 or rough, right about there. It always varies a little bit, just, but it's the same, you know, maybe a few seats, plus or minus. But it was the initial desire to have that be, to be a larger stadium. And in this case, we have, after we've gone and looked at all of the seating at the other stadiums, we have roughly 85, I'll say 8,400, 8,500 at Cravens. And Wildman has bid over 10,000 seats. Both have chairback seating. And so, so we, we looked at the possibility, as you mentioned, of, of pulling back. And that's one reason why we put the And that's one reason why we put the base bid at eighty, roughly eighty-five hundred for Martin. Um, it allows us again to, to give you the choice, uh, to decide whether or not you want us to go and make that an eighty-five hundred seat stadium or whether we want it to be an eighty, or pardon me, be ten thousand four hundred. And so, but I, but as I mentioned earlier, we, we want to do that in a way that you're going to get best value. And, and if, and so the best way for me to do that is give you a base bid number and then give you that add alternate so that you have the choice. And so while we might make a recommendation based on what we understand that the staff, perhaps athletic department, uh, might want and what we felt like the, the, the community there wanted, uh, it's certainly your choice to tell us how you'd like to proceed.
Okay, cause I, you know, I've, I've been to, to quite a few football games, um, over my time. And, and it doesn't seem like we're any, it is a general matter, coming anywhere close to our, having ten thousand people at, at any of our, our football fields on a, on a, a regular basis. Is there some, you know, I've heard it mentioned that we need to have it above ten thousand so we can host playoff games? Is that, is that a true statement?
I think initially that was, you know, that, that's one of the statements that was made. And I think it was based primarily on the possibility that, that other, uh, other districts or smaller schools might like to come here and use a larger stadium in a six A district. And that happens in a lot of your bigger six A districts because a lot of those smaller schools, this is, it's a grand place to come, you know, and play at one of these bigger stadiums. But, uh, but I think, I think in discussions early on, to your point, I think we kind of backed off of that and felt like it's not necessary for us to plan to build a stadium that large for, just so we can rent it out, right? That wasn't so. We kind of got away from that. And I think then the discussion centered more on allowing us to have a larger stadium for things like Dean P. Corey and, and that sort of thing. When we have our students come to that or the bigger games like, uh, and, and it can vary, right? Five years from now, we could be talking about Boogie and Zeguin being the biggest, the biggest turnout, right? But right now that seems to be a Lamar or Arlington, the Martin competing against one another. And so I think that was the desire was to have a stadium that can handle comfortably, you know, all of the bands and the parents and so forth for those bigger home, in-town home, home games and that sort of thing.
And I think it's been a while, but I think at one point, Mr. Hill sent us some, um, some data on attendance that, or at least tickets purchased at, at football games. And none of them that I recall were, were in the vicinity of, of nine, ten thousand.
Yeah. I, I, I don't know that for a fact. I'd have to visit with, or ask, uh, Coach White to give us some information on that.
Okay.
But I do understand what you're saying. It's not, it, it's not common that we're going to fill that stadium every night. You're right.
And so I said, so I actually had, I was, I misunderstood then. So the, the playoff possibility was not for A I S D schools. It would be for the possibility of renting it to small, you know, teams from other smaller districts that might want to use it as a venue.
That's my understanding is that, is that typically when we play a playoff game, we're going to go to a bigger venue ourselves. Uh, so, uh, and I, I could invite Dr. Hill up here. He might have a little bit more information, but that's my understanding. So, Dr. Hill, would you like to? He may have something he, he can add to that.
So getting Dr. Ward's board, uh, Mr. Chapa, the, the, the playoff scenario is based on early rounds because the further you advance in the playoffs, you go to the neutral sites. There may be an opportunity early on where, uh, we flip a home and home. And there is a, not a really a requirement by the U L, but a suggestion that if you do a home and home, that you make sure that you have enough seating to, you know, seat the, the opponent comfortably. Ten thousand is something that's been thrown around, but to your point, I do recall pulling that data. We, we're at Choctaw on a regular basis and I don't think we've, we've sold ten thousand tickets there at any, any, probably a homecoming or two over the three or four years that we've been there.
Okay.
So.
And, and have we at our existing campuses that have, I guess only Wildman has above ten thousand seating? Have we hosted a playoff game there recently?
We have not.
Okay.
It's been quite some time.
Um, so on the, okay, thank you for that. So on the seating, just so I make sure I understand, Mr. Horn, the nineteen hundred, the, the number that is here for the alternate one seating, the, the five ninety-five?
Mm-hmm.
Is that for the, the nineteen hundred extra seats getting added back in? Or is it the nineteen hundred extra seats plus some with adding seat backs to some? What is the, what is that number coming from?
So the, the, the number currently where we're at with eighty-four hundred would be strictly, it's strictly a base bid of bleacher seating, no chairback seating, all eighteen inch base. And so if we went to, uh, if we wanted to go to add the chairback seating in, but we wanted to have a number that was somewhere between, say eighty-four hundred and ten thousand, then we would have to refine that, that add alternate number, work with our contractor to, and our architect to do that.
Okay.
But that's possible.
Okay. Now I'm going to go back to the, when we were first talking about these three stadiums, this part of the twenty nineteen bond program. The idea is, is that we need three stadiums. We were losing U T A. Um, at the time, we didn't know what was going to happen to what is now Choctaw Ballpark. Um, and now there's, there's several things there and there's a football field inside and we've been renting it.
Right.
And I understand the cost of that is somewhere in the neighborhood of, of two hundred-ish, a little over two hundred thousand annually, I think is, is what the cost of that is. Is that right?
I, I don't know that off the top of my head. Again, I defer to Dr. Hill, so. It's a good question. I just.
It is, uh, we are, we contract with them on a per event basis. And we try to do about ten to twelve events a year at about fifteen thousand per event plus some additional costs. So.
Okay.
You're right, yeah.
All right. So in the, I'm not meaning to make a pun here, but in the ballpark.
Yes, you're right, yeah.
Um, okay. So thanks, thank you for that. So the, the idea of parity is that, what I'm thinking is, is with the seating here, if we go back up to, you know, I, I can, we want these, we want Cravens and Wildman and Glaspy to be substantively similar. That was the original vision. Um, and Cravens and Wildman will come later. So my thought here is, is if we, if we go bigger on Glaspy, then are, are we planning on doing the same for Cravens and Wildman? Because I understand that there's a difference in seating capacity now, but those stadiums, at least in the vision, are going to be redone. And so there's an opportunity to adjust the capacity for those stadiums going forward as well.
Yes, without a doubt, we can, if we wanted to have them all be the same, uh, it would be very easy, for example, to do, to do the same thing with the other two stadiums. We have plans to, to improve their, uh, their seating already anyway. That was part of the bond. And so, uh, we would simply add some additional seating on the wings with, say at Cravens to increase their capacity. Wildman, we wouldn't have to do a whole lot, but we could add, you know, maybe an additional, uh, section on one end that typically the band or somebody plays out on the ends anyway. Or maybe a student section where there's junior high and that sort of thing. So it'd be very easy to add on a, a bay of seating and bring Wildman up to equal a number that you might have at Glaspy. So that's very doable.
Okay. So I want to go now to, say, the, the slide that's up. So there was the original, correct me if I'm wrong, the original thought with, in nineteen, this is pre-COVID, pre-inflation, was what was then just Martin Field and then it became Glaspy, Cravens and Wildman. Um, Martin was going to be about, we were thinking nineteen million and Cravens and Wildman about sixteen million each. Is that right? And not, not what's on your sheet here, but.
You're correct. Your number of nineteen, so when we built the bond initially, uh, the, you're, you're dead on. And, uh, Cravens and Wildman, we slated about a little over sixteen million apiece for those. And actually, and we did have a number of nineteen million for, uh, for the field that would be essentially Glaspy today. However, at the time, it was originally, it was originally designed to be at Workman. So there was, there's a substantial difference in what we would have done at Workman versus what we're doing at Glaspy today.
Right.
So, so, yeah, so there's two things at play there, uh, pre-COVID numbers, you know, before the inflation and then also an alternate site that we had originally slated for this.
Okay. And so I see here, so the, the number that we're looking at tonight for Glaspy is now thirty-four point nine million. What are Cravens and Wildman at? Are they, are they close to this twenty-six number that we rebid Glaspy for?
They're, they are actually. And, and Mr. Parkes and I have looked at that and worked with our architect and our estimators. And we're, and our all-in numbers on each of those, they're both in and around, uh, between twenty-five and twenty-six million apiece. So, and they, we've, you know, that number changes each day based on what we're doing and how we're, you know, want to go up a little bit, want to go down a little bit. And so, uh, but, yeah, that is pretty close.
And so when's the last time that we, we looked at the Craven and Wildman numbers? Because I, the twenty-six sounds familiar to me from when we did the reprioritization last summer.
Yes.
Have we looked at whether it would be twenty-six million today? Or is the thought like last, what would basically happen with Glaspy would happen with Cravens and Wildman? Where we're at twenty-six, but really we end up somewhere in the mid-thirties?
Those two numbers that, that you're, they were citing, that roughly twenty-five to twenty-six for both those two individually, uh, those numbers are, they're, they're recent estimates, but they're adjusted for possibly a year and a half to two years down the road. So they've been increased slightly. So we're hedging our bet a little bit to make sure we give you a number that we can live with.
So how does that change then the substantive scope of, of Cravens and Wildman compared to, to Glaspy? So we're going to have, um, we're going to have new Glaspy. It's going to be a new stadium. Are, is the thought still that we're going to have relative parity at, at Cravens and Wildman in terms of the quality and, and newness, niceness of the facilities? Or is it when we get there, we're going to touch, we're going to do that for some parts of Cravens and Wildman, but maybe some other parts we, we value engineer or we, we reduce the scope in ways that we didn't at, at Glaspy?
Yeah. No, the intent was to bring all three of them up to the same level. That's our, that's our goal. Uh, it's not to try to V E something out and keep an old ticket booth or something. Sometimes you can take, uh, depending on where it's located, you might be able to take a concession building. And it's brick and mortar. We might be able to take, just gut it out and then re-renovate it and make it look really nice and make it fit within our plan. But that wasn't, it's not the intent at this point. At this point, we want to bring all three to the same level.
Okay. So, so when we talk about twenty-six million each for Glaspy, for Cravens and Wildman, where, when we get down to it, time to do them, bid them out, unless there's a substantial change in market conditions, we're, we're looking at those numbers going up?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and, um, a lot of what, a lot of the difference in the, the number you, that you're citing or we're talking about for Cravens and Wildman versus Glaspy has to do with the site, the, the change in elevation on that side. And so we're, you know, we're, we're dealing with about thirty to thirty-five feet of elevation change from that hill where the neighbors live up on the hill down across that field site. And we're having to cut in to that, to that hill, build a retainer wall and road and that sort of thing, along with a press box. And everything at Mar, pardon me, I was going to say Martin, at Glaspy is relatively ground up. I mean, it's just, we're kind of stripping out what's there. We're starting over. So, uh, so that's, that's a lot of the difference in, in what you're seeing with that number for Glaspy and the two numbers that we're citing for Cravens and Wildman.
Okay. Um, so another question I had was, I'm looking at, in December of last year, we had a construction budget of twenty-five point two million.
Mm-hmm.
And then the bid came back at thirty-eight. And so there was a decision to go back out and rebid and, and try to get some knocked off of that. And we realigned, the realignment construction budget was twenty-six point four. So we only went up on our budget one point two. The bid comes back at thirty-four point nine. So even after we went up on our budget one point two, the project rebid came back at, at about, about eight point five million difference. What is the, what's the reason for you, you, you said when the, the bid came back last year, there were these changes made to try to push for a better deal and, and we did get, I think, a better deal. But it's still substantially, you know, compared to the delta that we got for doing that with the Martin High School renovations, generally, we got it down to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar delta between budget and rebid. This one actually, you know, is eight point five million. Um, what's the, what's sort of the rationale for not pushing harder? Maybe going back and re, you know, it seems like the vision here is driving what we're doing. Granted, we, we, you know, and I recognize the board passed the schematic design for Glaspy almost three years ago. And that was during a totally different world.
Right.
In many different ways. Is the vision for what we adopted for Glaspy driving this delta in the decision to move forward? Or, you know, is it, what, what is pushing that we're okay with? Okay, we went up to twenty-six point four and it came back at almost thirty-five and we're at this point going to say, okay, we're good with that.
It, a lot of it's just, we're just, we just realize that we know that, again, as I mentioned earlier, the materials used for a stadium are just so significantly greater than a traditional, more traditional brick and mortar, if you will, uh, addition to a high school. So there's a pretty sizable addition being added on to Martin and the Fine Arts with the band hall. Uh, but, but that's a very traditional construction for us. And, um, and stadiums are just more complex. They're more involved. Uh, they're, they, they just tend to be more difficult in the materials. Quite honestly, they're just very expensive. You just, it's, it's all about steel, again, steel, glass, aluminum, concrete and electrical. It's just, it's just very expensive products.
Okay.
Um, so that, that's really all I, I mean, that's the best way I could describe it.
And we anticipate those sort of market conditions for those materials are going to continue forward with the Cravens and, and Wildman renovations?
One thing we haven't seen is we've not seen those materials go down since COVID. So.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we, we were hoping, we'd love for them to go down. We'd love to see. But right now there's, there's the market for those material, the demand for those materials are so great still. And, and the contractor, or pardon me, the manufacturer is still trying to catch up. They're just not reducing their, they're not going to reduce their pricing, so.
Okay. So, you know, one of the concerns I have with this is in, I, I was there, you know, all this work for the, the construction of the nineteen bond in some way. And I know that the vision for that was three stadiums of parity. And we thought in November nineteen, we could get those for sixteen, sixteen and nineteen.
Yeah.
And that changed. And I understand why. And last number, last summer, we had the discussion about inflation. You know, we know inflation's been bad for consumer products generally, but for specifically what we need for these stadiums. You mentioned, I think, somewhere in the vicinity of thirty to forty percent for some of the materials. And the numbers aligned with that. But my concern with Glaspy, even after the adjustments we made last summer, going from nineteen to twenty-five point two to twenty-six point four and ultimately thirty-four point nine, what we're looking at tonight,
Yes, sir.
is, it's a three-stadium project.
Yeah.
And so if we're now at thirty-four point nine and we're at twenty-six and twenty-six for Cravens and Wildman, we're going from about fifty-one million roughly, when we put together the bond, that of the nine sixty-six million or whatever it was, fifty-one million, we're going to be dedicated to the three-stadium project. We're now getting closer to the, the ninety to a hundred million dollar.
Yes, sir.
range for three stadiums. And so my concern is, is what is the opportunity cost? And I know that we have, we have strategically said that these, this, these projects are a strategic, you know, are a priority for the district. They're, they're critical for program needs. What are we, what is getting, where's that money coming from, right? There's only nine hundred and sixty-six million dollars. We're going from fifty-one million to ninety to a hundred for three stadiums. What's, where are we getting that money from?
Certainly. So we, when we, there's a portion of the bond that we, uh, when we develop the overall bond package, we have a portion of it called program contingency. And it's a, so it's, it's a small, I'm going to say small amount relative to the overall bond dollars, right? But it's still very significant. And it's there for inflation, normal inflation. COVID inflation's a whole different ballgame, right? But it's there for normal inflation to carry us through the bond. Or, or just the, the eventuality that, that we're talking, like we're doing on any other project and we decided we're going to add a sixth grade wing to a junior high. Or, or it could be that you just want us to, to add a certain structure to a bill, to a particular campus. And, and it wasn't identified the bond. It gives me the ability to say to you, I have a place where I can go get that. That's program contingency. It's just, it's a what-if, you know, so, um, so we try to, we try to have a certain amount of money set up in the bond when it passes to allow us to do that. Um, and so a big portion of this would, or some of it would come from there. Uh, we also have, uh, recently during the past year, you know, you approved for us to take certain monies, the gas fund and other monies, and add that to the bond to help us to recover or adapt to this inflationary, uh, challenge that we're faced with. And so, uh, and then there's also the, the possibility that we are going to have projects that will come in under budget that we've refined towards the backend. And so it's a combination of things. It's a combination of trying to be very vigilant in, in our, in our estimating and our, in our bidding to try to make sure we stay at budget or under on a lot of projects that we're, that we're going to bring to you down the road. But also, uh, that program contingency money. And then, and then also the funds that we've added to the bond, overall bond program, so.
So it, would it be fair for me to say that no significant project on the campus, building, classrooms, academics is going to be reduced because of the increased cost of these three stadiums?
That, that would be a correct statement. So we've looked at those schools, uh, you challenged us as a board to continue to take schools like a Duff Elementary and, and continue to do what we planned and not cut back. And so at Duff, right now, you've seen recently on the, the communications from our communication department that we've torn down their old gym and we're going to rebuild the new, uh, gym and storm shelter. So we've really worked hard. Uh, our F P and C team has worked diligently to try to make sure that those projects you want, you wanted us to continue forward, moving forward with, that we're doing that. So it's, it's, it's very challenging, but, and it's, and we're counting pennies and nickels, you know, every day. So we, we, uh, we're just trying to make sure that we keep projects in budget and we, and we don't overspend things, but we don't miss things, you know, as we're, as we're bidding them out. Um, we're just looking for every little bit of savings we can along the way. But our, but we still plan on doing everything that we intended. And so, uh, playgrounds are just the, are kind of one of those things that, you know, we pulled up front. A lot of campuses, a lot of our elementaries, that was the big piece that they had.
Yeah.
So so and and even that went up, you know, the concrete cost did. But we were committed to that and we want to make sure that all the campuses are touched and that they get something significant, you know.
Okay, so so supporting this path forward is, and I'll come back to the, my idea of what that means in a second, but. That's not going to be, supporting this going forward is not going to result in a significant change to the project at Carter, for example.
No, Carter is 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 there and Carter is going to be built and we're committed to that 100%.
And there's not, I'm making up an example, there's not an elementary school that's supposed to get a new library and we're pulling the library out.
No, sir.
Okay.
Not at all.
So my, so I think you can see where I'm going with this is my concern is is that the 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 cost has gone up. And and in my view, the reason, one of the reasons the cost has gone up is we had a vision for this project and we adopted the schematic design and we have been set on meeting. That vision and that schematic design. And what I'm struggling with is. At what point does the cost go up so much that it's not just a matter of value engineering? Or reducing the scope here or there, it's, do we need to go back and reevaluate the original vision?
Yeah.
Because we've still got two more stadiums to build. And what I don't want to happen. Having grown up and 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 spent significant time at Wellman Field and and Cravens in in what are now 50, 60 year old facilities. Is that we complete the vision for Glasby and it's a great thing, no doubt. It's going to be a great thing. And then a year or two or three, when we get down the road and it's time to go out and bid for Wellman or Cravens, the 26 has also become 35 or maybe by then it's 40. And we balk at that. And we say, well, instead, what we're going to do is we're going to value engineer this and we're going to keep, you know, the aluminum seats there and we're going to modify them a little bit and spruce up the press box and. We'll pull out the 50 year old brick buildings that are the original locker rooms and and ticket booth and the concessions and whatnot. And we'll give those new. But at the end of the day, we don't end up with two stadiums that are actually substantively and qualitatively the similar to Glasby.
To Glasby, yes.
And so if there's a commitment by this board to to see that through, and I know that your staff will will do what you can to make that happen, then I'm. I I think then, based on your representations, that we're not significantly, we're not significantly affecting any of the academic programming that we have planned through the bond or the bond projects that are more academically campus based focus. Then I'm okay with that. But if if the intent is, well, we're really just trying to get this vision through for this stadium and then we'll come back and worry about when Wellman's and Cravens later on. Then then I I will really struggle with that. And so that's where I'm coming from. So but based on that. I do have, in in the principle of we're trying to to cut where we can, I do have one last question, I think, for Mr. Hill. Or Dr. Hill. Dr. Hill. Dr. Hill, if if the stadium capacity does not go from 8,400. Ish to 10,300 something, is that going to significantly impact our athletics programming?
Absolutely, Doc.
Okay. Okay, with that, I would like to. Move to alter the staff proposal. Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Horn, I know you and I have talked before about the changes that you're, you and your team were having to make for Glasby Field. But I don't know that everyone knows what what we've talked about and what those changes are. Could you talk a little bit about what the what the vision was and what the reality is?
Sure, probably the most noticeable, I mean, and I mentioned one with just a screening along the sides of the press box at the stairwell. You know, when we originally looked at this, we were anticipating the idea of bringing in LED lighting, but having that be what we call red, blue, green, right? Where we can make all the colors of the rainbow. However, that's a very expensive, you know, item. So. We could, we we could realize about a million and a half dollars if we get rid of the ability to change all the colors. To make all the colors of the rainbow and just go to a white LED lighting. And so the the base package now represents that. It's it's still LED lighting, LED field lighting. It's still LED lighting around the complex. But it's just white and that's it. And the, and there will be some, there'll be some color changing lighting at the main entry, the plaza, so that you can create the ambiance there. We still have the the large screen there at the field, so they can, they can do a lot of things with school for school pride and color and that sort of thing there on that as well. And then we can do things with banners around the, the ideas to have banner poles and be able to do banners around the stadium so that if it's a night when Sagan's there or any other school for that matter. They can change banners and make it feel like their home field. So that's probably the most noticeable item is taking out the the color changing LEDs. That that would be around the the stadium itself, both in and under it. And so and then from there, a lot of the other things are just, there there are things that a lot of people wouldn't notice. Again, the the electrical feeds that I talked about earlier, that's a big item. A lot of savings there that we've been able to garner to to drop that number from 15 and a half million, eight and a half million. And then it's a whole lot of little things. Just it's it's having our architect, they painstakingly went through the whole site and where we might kind of have a gentle sweeping concrete. Kind of a curved, you know, concrete area where we have just, we just have a lot of extra concrete. They went back in and and they cut in, cut out a lot of those pieces that. Aren't necessarily, you know, they're critical for us and nobody will ever notice that much difference for it. They also went through and did things like took out colored concrete. And it's really pretty to do that, but concrete's concrete. And while it adds to it, it it could be taken out and it's a pretty significant saving. So. There's just a lot of those types of smaller items and just it's it's, it was very challenging for them, for us. We just said to them, find a way to find, take money out of it that we can live with, right? And not and not and not hurt, like you were saying earlier. And so because the idea is to is to have a nice stadium. But then we also want something that informs what we're going to do with the other two. So.
And I can't remember whether it was restrooms or or concession stands, something we were going to have lots of them and they're going to move them to the ends.
Yeah, so we'll still have two large, we'll still have the restroom count like we intended. We have to do that for code, but but we did can convert two of the concession stands more to what we call vending concessions. So. They they would be more like drinks and popcorn packaged materials, whereas your larger concession stands, you know, you go get a cheeseburger or a hot dog, chili dog, right? So it's very expensive to build that type though, because I have to go to three compartment sinks and and possibly a grease trap outside of which all those utilities become very expensive. By doing just a vending type concession or just drinks and or sodas and and chips and candy bars. I don't have to build all that expensive infrastructure and that's another way we save a lot of money. But we didn't cut out the big, the big concessions. We just, instead of having four, we might have two with two smaller. Concession type vending or. I mean, it's, pardon me, just drinks and or sodas and candy bars.
Thank you so much. I knew that we'd had this conversation, but I wanted to make sure that the audience and the rest of the board members knew what painstaking. Measures you and your team and the architects have have done to try and bring down the cost as much as you could.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Certainly.
All right, Mr. Chapa, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, thank you. So thanks, President Fowler. The, so I was going to make an amendment to the the staff proposal and I don't by any means, you're giving us, you know, as you presented, you're giving us the options with the alternates here. And and the discussions we've had over the last two years and realizing that going forward, we have two more projects to do. And that we can adjust the scope of those and achieve even more cost savings by what we do here with Glasby. I would like to amend the staff proposal to. Not have the extra 1,400 seats. And I'll, I'll make, I'll make that a formal motion to to modify the staff proposal to remove the additional 1,400 seats at Glasby Field. Don't know if there's a second for that.
All right, I have a motion from. I have a motion for Mr. Chapa with an amendment. Do we vote for the amendment or?
It requires a second.
Parliament.
If there's no second, we continue discussing your make a motion.
Okay, is there, is there a second?
Clarification. So you're saying that would cut, come on, make sure you're right on the second.
Ms. Richardson?
Clarifying. So you were saying if we cut that, that would then save 595,000 dollars.
Yes, my hope is to save the the almost 600,000 for Glasby and then because the stadium capacity at Glasby is reduced, we won't incur the additional cost. To bring Wellman and Cravens up to the same capacity in the future. And we'd have additional savings realized then.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. I second. Thank you. We have a motion from, no, I forgot, a motion for Mr. Chapa and a second from. Ms. Richardson, I'm sorry. Please vote.
Wait, discussion.
Oh. All right, Mr. Will, um. Dr. Raj?
Well, I was first.
No, I'm still on. I'm still live. I'm live. So I appreciate where my colleague, Mr. Chapa, is coming from because, you know. What we're seeing here in the inflation is more than significant. And I too am concerned about. Impact to later projects in the budget, especially those necessary classroom additions and. Those things that help improve our tier one instruction. But having looked at the, what the cost of the addition is and the fact that it's only 1.7% of the total budget for Glasby. We're not seeing the kind of savings that I think would in the end be significant. So therefore, I would not be voting for the motion as it currently is.
So Mr. Will Banks, are you saying you won't vote for the motion with the amendment? Or you're not going to vote for?
There's technically no amendment. The motion is for. The the motion is for what was presented without the seating addition.
Thank you, Madam President, Board. So we have a motion to amend and we have a second. So that any discussion about that, then you'll vote on the motion to amend. And if it passes, then you'll reread the motion as it now is stated. If it doesn't pass, you go back to the original motion.
Parliamentary requiring.
There is no motion to amend prior.
Exactly.
There is no motion to amend.
Yeah. Mr. Chapa, is this the only motion that exists there?
Yeah, I I'm sorry. And I I I'm the root of of all confusion here. So I said I I moved to amend the staff proposal to remove the alternate for the seating.
You made a motion.
Okay.
To approve with.
So, okay, that is the current motion. It won't actually pass anything. It'll just change the administration's recommendation.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so we.
Is it?
No, I think it's to accept the administration's recommendation less that. Less that 595 add. So it would actually pass as far as a recommendation. I was prepared to make, I don't know, Robert's rules technically, but an incidental motion, an appeal motion. That would actually put those seats back in. You told me which way we have to do it.
You'd have to vote down the original motion because the amendment would actually reverse the original motion, which you can alter, but you can't reverse the motion. That's correct.
Okay.
So can you say that one more time for clarity?
All right, where we're at right now is there is a motion to pass the administration's recommendation. Less a certain number of of money or seats that Mr. Chapa made. So. Okay, was it 600,000 dollars less approximately?
Yeah, it's without the alternate add one. There you go.
Okay.
For Glasby Field.
So in essence, I'm going to say it back in a layman's terms. In essence, Dennis.
Yes, I'm listening.
In essence, if the if the motion is posed the way that it is.
Yes, sir.
It's minus the seat. So if you vote yes, you're voting for the motion, which will pass the, pass the the item without the seats. If you vote no, it will not pass the item with or without the seats and you'd have to go again.
And we'd have a new motion if necessary.
You just go, you'd go again. Does that make sense?
You could maybe have it a little bit more clear in stating to that, Mr. Chapa, your motion would be. To accept staff recommendations that include alt numbers four, five and six, which says the exact same thing. Maybe that would make it more clear.
I think they're synonymous.
Yeah, they are.
They are synonymous. So everyone understands what the motion is now? Then you can vote if there's no further discussion. Is there further discussion?
Okay, so does everyone, I I apologize for phrasing it this way. I was looking at it as I would move to alter the staff proposal and then someone would make a motion to accept the staff proposals amended. But.
But that's not where we're at.
I understand now.
Right.
That where we are is that my motion is to pass the staff recommendation minus alternate addition one.
Correct.
All right, so we have a motion for Mr. Chapa and a second for Mr. Will Banks. Please vote.
No.
No, what?
That was the original.
No, no.
No, that was Ms. Richardson, yeah.
It was Mr. Chapa made the motion, Ms. Richardson seconded.
Okay, y'all, I'm so confused with this.
Are you okay back there?
All right. All right. Ms. Richardson?
And I want to clarify why I would second that because of the fact of those next two stadiums that are coming up. What what I have watched as a stakeholder is this price has kept increasing and increasing. And we know without a doubt inflation is going to happen. We know the cost of materials already, what you have told us and how quickly that number is changing, so quickly that you're giving us bids that expire in 30 and 45 days. I don't want to take anything away from them. Those stadiums have a chance to also have their seating matched to save dollars because we know it will be expensive. So at this point, it, for me, it makes the most sense that this is an easy way to save that 600,000, which it may only be 1.6 of the percent of the budget. But going into the next two stadiums, it may be a lot more than that. So for me, that was an easy, this was an easy choice that we could make to save that money also going forward.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. All right, are we ready to vote?
Please vote.
All right, we have yes votes of three, no votes of four. So the motion does. Does.
It fails.
Dies, all right.
Motion fails.
Motion fails.
Now is there a new motion?
Madam President.
Whoops, Dr. Raj, you were first.
Okay.
I'll defer to Mr. Will Banks.
Mr. Will Banks?
Madam President, I move to approve the competitive seal proposal 23 dash 43 for Martin High School.
And Glasby Field additions and the renovations projects as presented with alts one. Four, five and six.
Second.
We have a, we have a motion for Mr. Will Banks and a second from Dr. Raj. Please vote. Motion carries. Thank you. We now move to discussion A and that's our financial update. Dr. Wertz.
Thank you, President Fowler. Earlier this evening, we covered recapture with Ms. Moss. And now Ms. Martin will be bringing our routine financial update for the 23, 24 school year. Good evening, Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz.
Good evening, Ms. Fowler, Board. Yes, today we're just going over our routine financial update and we'll get started. So in your packet, in the consent agenda, we have our donations, bids and purchases greater than 50,000. We also are bringing a budget amendment for the fiscal year 24 budget. Then we're also bringing our monthly financial report. That's preliminary, unaudited as of June 2023. We are still working on those audited numbers and then the monthly investment report as of June 2023. And speaking of the audit, just giving you a timeline of what's going on. So our fiscal year ended June 30. And currently, we are working on closing out those financials, ready to provide a trial balance to our auditors at the end of the month. Because they will be here in the first week of September, the first two weeks of September. They should have a draft. They should have a draft of that financial report in October for us to take to you for approval in November as it is due to the E A at the end of November. So for this fiscal year update, we are bringing a budget amendment to the board. The budget amendment is mostly, it's mostly for two things. One is an estimated amendment to the safety and security budget. And then the remainder is to update our debt service and capital projects budget. Those budget were estimates based on the bond refunding and issuance. And those closed in August 10th, so now we're just amending the budget to adjust the estimates to the actual amounts. And we don't have any amendments to the child nutrition budget at this time. So speaking of the refunding and issuance, the district had a very successful sale of the Series 2023 issuance. From the timing standpoint, the sale was at a good point in the market. Buyers were anticipating some reductions in the rates. So the, they were aggressive in submitting orders for this issue, for the issues. We were looking at, at a true, prior to the issuance, we're looking at true interest cost pricing of 3.702. And we came in at 3.65, 3.646. So that was 5.6 basis points lower based on the original pricing yields. Part of that refund, issue, that series was also a refunding. The refunding was very beneficial. Total savings on that refunding was 1.1 million 207,750 dollars. And that was on refinancing of maturities that would not otherwise have been typical candidates for refunding. The average annual savings is 192,958 for those series from 2025 to 2030. And that was a present value savings equal 2.3% of that 46 million that was refunded. And you all previously approved that in order to do the refunding, we needed to just have a minimum present value savings of 1.5%. Also, just as an update on the, on the legislature, they increased the state mandatory homestead exemption applicable to our school districts from 40,000 to 100,000 per eligible homestead. And then they also directed the T E A to reduce our maximum compressed tax rate by an additional 0.107 cents. Now, because this is going to be a constitutional amendment, it does need to go on the ballot in November 7, 2023. And a yes vote would support amending the state constitution to increase that home state, home state tax exemption from 40,000 to 100,000. However, when we received our certified property values from Tarrant County Appraisal District, they did provide us with a 40,000 and 100,000 valuation. And we are comparing it to the 100,000. That is the assumption that that will, that will pass. And so we received those certified values on July 24, 2023. From those values, we submitted our information to the T E A, who then determined our maximum compressed tax rate. So as you can see, on that first column was our adopted budget. We were estimating it at 43 billion at an M and O tax rate of 0.9335. After our submission and with the additional tax compression, we are looking at that certified values 100K column of .8249. So the difference between the budget and what we are going to be adopting is about 10, is 10.80, 10 cents and 86 and change. That is a reduction of eight, a little over 18 cents from fiscal year 23. We will be taking that tax rate adoption to you all in September. So running the estimates, this is all preliminary. Using those 100,000 certified values, we just want to show compared, comparing our adopted budget to how that affected, the certified values have now affected it. Now, just as a reminder, the tax compression, it doesn't impact your overall level of funding that the district is entitled to. It only impacts the balance of state and, and local. So the net effect should remain around the same. And that is what we're seeing. As you can see, the difference really if the net of M and O tax collection, state revenue and recapture is a difference of less than 1%. So that was what we were expecting. But again, these are just preliminary estimates. We won't know until, we'll have better numbers for you in October. Once we receive our October levy, that will show the true impact of the certified values. And also, we should be bringing in a budget amendment along with our first six weeks data. And then we, last, is we received our notification. We were notified of our fiscal year 23 first reading on August 7, 2023. The district did receive a nay and we will be holding a public hearing for this first reading on September 21 at the regularly scheduled board meeting. And that's all I have. If you have any questions?
Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler, and thank you, Ms. Martin, for your presentation. One brief question is, given the changes, assuming they pass in November, with the compression in the 100,000, a homestead exemption, you noted that on the budget difference that it was a net $4,000 gain, a $4 million, $5 million gain?
Yes.
Estimated.
Yes.
So, because, you know, the bucket of funds to us stays the same. It's just that shift between local and tax. So my question is, is how much of our projected recapture for this year, or this upcoming year would go, how much would that go down? It seems like it would, most of that $4 million gain, was that due to recapture?
Yes.
Being, okay.
Yes, running the same numbers, but with 100,000 values, we did look at C, C recapture decreasing by about 3 million, 3.3 million dollars. So more than half.
So most of it, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, good. So the one benefit of, that the legislature inadvertently gave us is a reduction in recapture. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Dr. Raj?
I just wanted to say thank you for the update, the work that the entire finance team puts into trying to keep this ship sailing in calmer waters, even though the waters aren't very calm. And I just didn't want to leave this topic without saying congratulations on that 98. And another A, it's like laissez faire. You always do so well. Thank you very much for continuing financial stewardship excellence in our district.
Thank you, Dr. Raj.
Thank you, Dr. Raj, and I echo what you said. We appreciate all the work that you do in trying to, to keep us afloat and doing the best you can and cutting where you can, and we appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler.
We will now address the consent agenda items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval as one item. Unless removed from the consent agenda, these items will be acted on at one time with no discussion. Trustees, are there any requests for items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda?
Move to approve.
I second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Dr. Raj and a second by Mr. Will Banks. Please vote. All votes are in the affirmative. Thank you. We now return to our discussion item number three. Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Fowler. Tonight, we bring you the TASB Policy Update 121 for discussion, as well as several other policy, local policy updates. And Dr. Hill will be presenting those and answering some questions.
Good evening. We're back. Humor for a policy update. Dr. Wertz, President Fowler, and Board members, again, we're here to talk about TASB Policy Update 121 and four local policies that the administration brings for your consideration as well. So a little bit of background information. Update 121 encompasses both legal and local policy changes. Administration also recommends four other policies that we've talked about and will go into a lot more detail on. You don't need reminding of this, but I'll say it anyway. Changes in the law are what the legal policies are. It's just for information for us. We just have to do it. The local policies need a board action to either adopt, revise, or reveal the policy as it is presented. In update 21, 121, there are a total of 60 policies, 48 local and 12 legal, 48 legal and 12 local policies. And you can see the administration's additional policies. Just a little bit about the process for review. Administration, all of the staff, all the way down to, well, say, up to coordinators and everyone who these policies impact, have had an opportunity to review them. The Board Governors Committee and our attorneys have looked at it. We've had a lot of conversation with the Texas Association of School Board's legal office to talk about the policy revisions as well. Well, let's look at some of the legal policies, and I won't bore you with all of this. But there's really, the state's really taking bullying very seriously. So they've added a lot of legal policy changes to address bullying. Some academic achievement policies to address awarding student credit for students who are homeless or in families in transition. Talks about the support services for students that are experiencing homelessness. And then a minimum standard again for bullying prevention is included in that policy of the legal policy reviews. Some of the local policy reviews, and I won't even dare to go into the details of this, but the finance team are here to talk about those first two if necessary, about capitalization of, of group assets and some other economic development changes that are in policy, that were once in policy, but they just put a note in there to, to remind us of that. Again, F D talking about the appropriate award, awarding of credits for students who are classified as homeless. They really want to put some emphasis around that. F F I talked about, again, the new minimum standard for bullying prevention and how we should monitor that. And again, the four local policies. C H Local, coming from administration, addresses certain, special circumstances by which the superintendent can make purchases and inform the board prior to. G D K allows for some, for the possession, consumption, and, and sale of alcoholic beverages on certain district property for certain events. And F D A and F D B both realign the priority for intra and inter-district transfers to make those mirror because we have this pretty open transfer policy within the district. So again, we've looked at this with the Governance Committee. Administration and staff have looked at it. Our next steps are to continue to take any feedback that we may have tonight, make those revisions if necessary, and we'll bring it back at the next board meeting for you to take action on. So with that, we'll take any questions on update 121.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Do we have any questions or comments? Dr. Raj?
Yeah, I was just going to say that because of the, the hour that we're at and we still have some, two really big items, especially the safety and security. I want to make sure we get to that. I recommend that we take our thoughts and recommendations to Governance Committee, some of which I think they're already aware of, to then work with staff for anything to bring it back next time, that we just do that instead of taking the time here tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. I think we're all in agreement. Thank you, Dr. Hill. We appreciate you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
We're now ready for discussion C, our one-way dual-language transition update. And we will hear, oh, Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Fowler. So as you know, we have had a late exit program for bilingual services for many, many years. And we're here to talk about our transition to a one-way dual-language program. There are two different types of dual-language programs that you'll talk about, you'll learn about tonight. One is two-way, which is what we typically have seen, what you do see at Corey and Jones Academy, where you have, you have native speakers in English and Spanish, both in the same environment. A one-way dual-language program, as you'll learn tonight, is specifically directed towards students who qualify, qualify for bilingual services. And there's a lot of research around that about how it is really a premier kind of program for bilingual education, even for students who are qualifiers. So tonight, we have Dr. Buell here, who's going to share the update on our transition, where we are in that process, and answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, President Fowler, members of the board, and Dr. Wertz. Get situated here. All right, so we are going to talk tonight about the one-way dual-language transition that we've currently started this year. So the mission in Arlington I S D is to empower and engage all students to be contributing, responsible citizens striving for maximum potential through relevant, innovative, and rigorous learning experiences. The emergent bilingual population in Arlington I S D continues to become a percentage, increase the percentage of total A I S D students. Our emergent bilinguals represent over 30% of our total A I S D student population. And we have 17 schools with 50% or more emergent bilingual students. That's 23% of our schools have more than 50% emergent bilinguals as their student population. We have another six schools that have between 40 and 49%. So this is a substantial part of our population that we are serving. In order to best meet the needs of our emergent bilingual learners, we're transitioning from this late-exit model to the one-way dual-language. A late-exit transitional bilingual program and a one-way dual-language program are both bilingual programs, but they use a combination of academic instruction in English and Spanish. We're going to talk about some of the differences between the two tonight. Their goals, their methodology, strategies are different, and they result in different student outcomes. In the transitional model, the first language serves as the basis to develop English and later the academic knowledge in both languages. In a one-way dual-language program, there is bridging of the content and language to provide connection and meta-analysis. The transition program is considered a subtractive model as the Spanish language in the home culture is decreased in the academic setting. Versus in a one-way dual-language program, the model is considered an additive model. As another language is added, both are used and both are celebrated. The goal of the one-way dual-language program is to achieve a 50-50 model between the languages. Oops, sorry. I didn't advance. So dual-language programs promote bilingualism and biliteracy, grade-level academic achievement, and cross-cultural competence in all students. Students maintain their native language while adding another language, and they develop pride in their own culture while developing an understanding of others. We're going to take a look at what the research says. So Professors Virginia Collier and Wayne Thomas, both from George Mason University, are internationally known for their research in long-term school effectiveness for linguistically and culturally diverse students. The research they've done on dual-language education is perhaps some of the best well-known across the United States. Their longitudinal studies on student achievement in various types of educational settings for English learners are considered seminal work in the field. For over three decades, their research on effectiveness for English language learners has provided grist and justification for their recommendations. They have analyzed more than 8 million student records, the longest and longest longitudinal studies ever undertaken in the E L L. This graph that we have displayed here shows that English, English language learners' long-term achievement on standardized tests and English reading compared across seven bilingual programs that you'll see on the right-hand side are in comparison to the average performance of English-speaking students. We can see that quality, long-term bilingual programs do work. Dual-language programs are providing outstanding results. Dual-language is the only bilingual program model that prevents and closes the opportunity gap for our multilingual learners. So as we've embarked on this work in Arlington I S D, there was an advisory committee that was formed to lean into this research and to prepare our implementation plan. Various members. Various members from campuses and different departments across the district were part of the multi-year advisory committee that participated in the professional learning, the strategic planning, and they developed the language allocation plan for our one-way dual-language program. This was a collaborative process with input from many stakeholders, and you can see those listed here. So this year, we're beginning the implementation of the one-way dual-language model. The program-model differences are mostly in the upper grades, which especially around biliteracy development and the cross-linguistic connections. That's why we couldn't do pre-K through six in year one. So you'll notice on here that we'll implement the pre-K through one programming during the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year, and we will add an additional grade level every year until we have fully implemented the model in two thousand and twenty-nine. In order to support implementation, going back to the advisory committee, there have been a lot of strategies that have taken place. It's been with a lot of thought and input from a lot of people that we've moved forward. They started with a book study on the guiding principles of dual-language education, which was actually done with our consultant, Barbara Kennedy. We've been very fortunate as a district to be able to work with her. She's definitely an expert in the field. She has dedicated over thirty years to increasing effectiveness in multilingual education. She's trilingual. She's worked as a bilingual ESL, World Languages teacher, district administrator, national consultant, and state program director at TEA. So she's really helped us guide the planning of this implementation. Training materials, curriculum development, and various other resources have provided supports to teachers, so their lift for implementation is minimal. The bigger impact has been felt in changing the knowledge and understanding of the new program-model design and the teaching strategies and goals associated with it. That is why we've had the two-day academy. It's been a vital component of the transition, and it was provided for our teachers. There was also administrator training. The toolkit provides all the additional resources a teacher would need to implement the program in their classroom. And the new teaching strategies have been pre-planned by our department and included in the curriculum so that teachers just need to implement them in the classroom. We also had principals participate in this training, because we know that we need to provide the knowledge and skills for them to be able to lead this initiative on the campus. So this toolkit was part of the full-day principal institute, where they learned about the research, the program design, resources being provided, curriculum supports and implementation needs, and an understanding of the goals and the expectations of the one-way dual-language, as they're expected to lead this on their campus. They received this print and digital toolkit to support this transition at each of the campuses. And then what was really exciting, because I got to see it firsthand, was the teacher toolkit. The teachers have the tools right at their disposal that they are being provided in this toolkit that has the books they'll use throughout the year, the classroom labels, vocabulary cards, communication tools, and other instructional materials for program-model implementation. I was actually able to observe this part of the training with the teachers over the summer. They were highly engaged and very excited about the tools they were going to get. And just in visiting with them, very positive about this transition and just all the support that they're going to get for their learners. So what are our next steps in the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year? To continue to support implementation this year, we will provide ongoing training for our late hires so that we can make sure that they have the knowledge and skills to fully implement as well. We'll ensure our campuses get support with implementation from our World Languages Department. We're going to provide ongoing professional learning for our teachers and our principals. We're going to continue to develop curriculum to support the bilingual programming. And we're going to continue to seek feedback and monitor implementation so that any mid-course adjustments that need to be made can be. In order to support the fidelity of implementation, we will have classroom look-for's identified. This really helps our administrators and also our World Languages Department, because it prioritizes the components so that they can really, it kind of shrinks the change for our teachers and our administrators in leading the work, and they're able to really monitor that implementation of progress. There will also be campus walks that will be completed collaboratively between the campus principal and the World Languages Department, so they can walk through and view that implementation together and talk about strategies to further that implementation at the campus level. That'll take place every four to six weeks so that the campuses can continually to receive that expert feedback from our World Languages Department. And then again, feedback will be sought from the teachers that are implementing this so that we can really gauge the support that they need to have effective implementation. So that'll be an ongoing process that will inform mid-course adjustments to the plan. And I'd welcome any questions.
Dr. Rice?
Thank you, President Fowler. Thank you, Dr. Buell. I appreciate the presentation, the information, the work that's gone into this. I really appreciate the layout, the thoughtful approach in looking at the entirety of the program in various stages, as well as the teacher toolkit, the support, the continuous feedback loop mechanism from the teachers. So I think it's great from that standpoint. It's obviously a data-driven program. My first question would be, besides the monitoring as far as getting feedback and seeing how things are going, are there any kind of targets or metrics to look at that you're planning on to see how well this program is working for our learners? As opposed to the traditional, I see, you know, we're doing it from a data-based decision, but that may or may not correlate to what our outcome will be, and hopefully it will be, but what are we doing to measure that?
Right. So we will be, we will be tracking the data and student performance. All of our campuses, which we're really excited about, will have a progress monitoring plan put in place, and this will be part of it. So that'll be part of what World Languages will work with the principals to make sure that's embedded. We can measure student performance through M-class lectura, the circle, and the NWE map. So just like we're measuring with screeners on our English-speaking population, we'll also be able to do that with our emergent bilingual students as well.
Dr. Rice? Also, I can, I want to add something to that. So the important, if you look on the graph, that was provided, one of the things I think's important to note about a dual-language program is the, is where you start to see the variance or the spread in terms of achievement over time. Because what you're really trying to get to through an additive model, especially with dual-language, is you're trying to get to the endpoint where you have kids that have both English and Spanish proficiency and are able to graduate and utilize them, whereas the late-exit is more reductive in nature. It's more about how do we move you quickly into Spanish, into English, and there's not really any attention about growing the Spanish. What you'll notice on the graph, and this is where the implementation is really important in terms of monitoring the outcomes you're describing, is the spread starts to happen in the years five to seven. So at the very beginning, you, even if you look at the model itself, you're going to do more Spanish than you will English, because that's their native language, and then eventually you'll move into this fifty-fifty model. But when you start looking at achievement, as it would be represented, for example, on a standardized test like STAR, where you start to see the change happen for kids in terms of them pulling away from other groups, happens starting around after the fifth or sixth year in the program. So you'll start noticing kids that are in a bilingual dual program, whether it's one way or two, and I think we've seen evidence of that, especially in two, at both Corey and Jones, that when they start to get into their fifth or sixth year in the program itself, which really is more like fifth grade, sixth grade, you start to see that pullout. So you would look as a district, not only at the metrics she's talking about, but you would also look at STAR results and compare them against their peer groups. Yeah.
Great. Yeah, looking forward to that, absolutely. So I noticed you had really good representation, it seemed, as far as the committees. My rough count, just looking at the slide, I think was about ten different campuses that were represented, roughly. So what thought process went into making it those particular campuses versus others in the district? Because we have fifty-four or so elementaries.
Sure. And Elise Hardy led that work as the director for the World Languages Department, so I'm going to, you read my mind. So I'm going to ask her to come up and talk about the process. She's done an excellent job of leading this, and also just kudos to her for the professional learning. This summer, it was just stellar, and that was the work of her and her department, so.
Good evening, Dr. Wertz and Ms. Fowler and members of the board. So we've had a great time, really, in this transition work and engaging varieties of members of the district. We offered it to everybody. Now, I will say one thing, even though we have over fifty elementary schools, there's only twenty-four that have bilingual programs. And so this is taking place at the twenty-four campuses. And so we offered it to all of them. We said, the bigger the party, the better. And those were the ones that were willing to engage, because it took a level of commitment participating in, it was a multi-year commitment from them. And so we participated in months' worth of study with one of the authors and one of the TEA leaders for this work, and then we did all the strategic planning. So it was open to all of them. These were, these were the principals that took us up. Or sometimes they recommended maybe an high coach or various different staff members. But those are the ones that were willing to, we said it from the very beginning, this is going to be a journey. And if you can't join us now, it's okay. You're going to join us in implementation. It's going to be a full-district commitment. But we want to definitely be people, have people, and participate in the committee who are able to do that full-time commitment. And we're very open from the very beginning about that.
That's great. I appreciate that explanation, very much so. And so out of those ten or so, so the additional twelve to fourteen, what are we doing in having them buy into this and take ownership in this process as well?
Yeah. So, Dr. Buell, thank you for sharing some of the updates, which included the Principal Institute. And so the Principal Institute was a full-day training where we had all of our bilingual campuses represented. They were able to bring in not only themselves as the leaders of the school, but a team with them. So that way, they got not only the training, but then we started talking about what does implementation look like on the campus? And they were able to start thinking about what is it going to look like for our school or our school. So they left there not only with an understanding, but with a plan about what it's going to look like. So at that point, we were all twenty-four together, hand in hand.
Good, good. Glad to hear it. Final question that I have might be for Dr. Buell, might be for Dr. Wertz, I don't know. And it's probably an easy answer. Is this, do we have the staffing in place? Our existing staff were good. Are we going to have a budgetary expectation that we're going to have to cover some more for additional bilingual, once this is full twenty-four campuses?
Yeah. No, we, we have, we have the budget in place for the staff. And we're even starting to do some coordinated work between our CNI department and our World Languages Department to make sure that we have equity in those resources. So they've been working collaboratively on that P seven, and I think it's a great way to maximize our human resources that we have in the district.
That's excellent. Thank you.
I will add a little bit to that. So in the language allocation plan, we reach a fifty-fifty model by second grade. And the reason that's important is under TEA allowances for dual-language program, we can actually pair up a bilingual teacher with an ESL teacher. Right now, all of our bilingual classes require the bilingually certified teachers, which, as you know, has been hard for us to fulfill a hundred percent of the way. And that is always our goal, because we have to submit waivers to the state when we, when we do not do that. One of the things that dual-language provides under the dual-language guidance under TEA is availability to pair a bilingual and an ESL teacher, because it's a fifty-fifty model, without having to submit those waivers to the state.
That's great. That's great. That's what I love to hear. Wonderful. Thank you very much. That's all the questions I have. Looking forward to the outcomes.
Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler, and thank you, ladies. If you could go to the graph, I think it says it all. I did a little deep dive over the weekend, and the research is replete with data showing the importance of encouraging the home language skills. And the reason for that makes a lot of sense to me. So is it not true that the reason why you start to see maybe the modest gains at the early years is that with the dual-language model, as opposed to the transitional model, that kids can understand those concepts, but later, when they master English, they can easily transfer those concepts versus struggling in English acquiring those concepts? And so that's why is it not that you see the graph that you see, where maybe it's a little slower and not much different than transitional in the early grades, and then accelerates over time to where, is that the reason?
Yeah. That is definitely one of the reasons, and you can even see that in between some of the models that are even close to each other, like in three and four, which are both transitional ed, except one of them, you have ESL taught through content, and the other one is taught through an ESL pullout. And that's the difference between being able to, what you're talking about, that language acquisition versus that I'm learning it through content. And so you're exactly right, in the sense of when I have to only pay attention to just learning my language, it's going to put me behind on content. But when I'm keeping up both language learning in addition to content learning, then I'm able to keep up both at the same time.
Yeah, no, excellent. And then, you know, making them even when they graduate with strong bilingual skills that are in high demand all over the world even sets them up for success later in life. And so I'm just delighted to see that we're doing this. I don't recall when we made the switch earlier, but when I saw this in the packet, I was excited to see it, because I think, like I said, the research is clear. It's replete with graphs just like this. So, and it sounds like, I want to echo my colleague, Dr. Rice's, comments that you guys have done an outstanding job on laying out the plan for execution. I like that we have the ability through our screeners and NWA map who, you know, I think that was one of the best switches we ever made in the district, because it's allowed us to up our data game and to monitor the metrics on rollouts of programs just like this. And the fact that you also have look-for's, which is very important for testing for fidelity, one of the things that I think every district struggles with, and, but we've got a plan to tackle that. So kudos to you guys. The, I was going to ask about the, since we do have a great historical data, longitudinal data on cohorts who have gone through both Jones and Corey, on now that those kids are now getting ready to graduate out of, almost graduating out of gun, yeah, in eighth grade, where we can see the differences of those students versus students that started at the same time as them with similar language skills, ESL skills in first grade, and see if we see the exact same divergent patterns. So I'd be, I'd really love to see that data, and it seems like that's something we could easily provide, right, Ms. Lopez, Dr. Lopez?
She may need to come join us.
Really what you would look at, too, in answering that question is, you know, in our, in our system, we have two-way dual, now one-way dual, and then we also have ESL that's done in an academic environment. You could look and see how those kids are performing and how they performed over the years. The interesting thing about looking at our transitional model that we're currently in and how, and the dual-language, which is what they would say is the premier, you can even compare, like you said, those two groups of kids and see, and see how it looks. The interesting thing about one-way dual versus two-way dual is the fact that it's really, it's really, like I was saying earlier, designed to facilitate this additive idea around kids who already come with a culture and a language and build from that point rather than dismissing it. So, yeah.
Creates a more well-rounded student, helps on SEL, and appreciate their culture. My wife doesn't like me to speak about her from the dais, but she grew up in a timeframe where that side of her was discouraged, strongly discouraged, and she always regrets not being as fluent in Spanish as she wishes she could be. And that part of her wasn't allowed to blossom, so. Thank you. That's all, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Ms. McMurro.
Thank you, Dr. Buell. Thank you guys so much. I had just had a quick question. I know that when we get new students enrolling from, enrolling into our campuses for the very first time, the families, as part of our registration process, have to fill out that home language survey. And this might be early on to be thinking about this, but will there be an opportunity to ensure that our families registering understand that they have access to this new program? Although it might only be at ten campuses, will there be a way for staff to ensure access to these programs and understand fully what they offer?
Yes, absolutely. So we will actually have it at all twenty-four bilingual campuses. And so all the students that qualify for bilingual ed, this will be the new program that they will be receiving. So it's not that they might have a possibility of. It is if you qualify for bilingual services in Arlington ISD, you will be receiving the one-way dual language program. And in addition to do that, we do have also in place in our welcome center, our multilingual welcome center, also when they come in for testing and we talk to them about accepting because that is where they accept the program and give us parent permission to participate in the program, we give them information on various things in Arlington ISD, including the new one-way dual language program.
Wonderful. That's great to hear. The last thing we want is a language barrier to inhibit access to this program. So I'm glad y'all have thought that through.
Not in our department.
Wonderful. Thank y'all so much.
One else?
Thank you, ladies. And this just goes to show that Arlington ISD is always looking for the best opportunities for our students and how we can ensure their success. And I just think we do a fabulous job of that. And I thank you both for this wonderful program. I think we're gonna see the benefits.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now moving to discussion D, the safety and security update. Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Fowler. So as you know, recently in the legislative session, the legislators passed House Bill Three, which changed the face of safety and security across the state. And Dr. Hill and the team have been working really hard with the Arlington Police Department to put things and measures in place to not only continue to ensure safety, but so that we can be in compliance with this law by the designated date. So we invited Dr. Hill and his team here today to give you an update on where we are with safety and security in Arlington to answer some questions.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. And we'll get right into it, President Fowler. Again, safety, security is just not because of House Bill Three and Arlington ISD. And this next slide will just kinda show you how much layers, how many layers we have and our focus on security. And we do everything from weather drills all the way down to, and you look at the list there, and we ended with the House Bill Three requirements and some other safety and security measures that are in place throughout the system as well as throughout our campuses. But what we're gonna focus on tonight are just three of them that I wanna call our attention to. And those are the TEA Intruder Detection Audits, or IDAs is what they call them, our metal detectors and our screeners, and then the House Bill Three requirements. So again, these are just three of many layers of security that we have here within the district. So I'll call your attention back to June of 2022, when the governor gave this charge to have these Intruder Detection Audits at every one of our campuses mandated in-person, unannounced, random visits to our campuses to check for certain things. The Texas School Safety Center contracted with Region Eleven to conduct these audits. And we had a lot of conversation and training with Region Eleven to actually ensure compliance. When there wasn't compliance, we've been back before you to kinda share that and what our corrective actions were. The initial timeline was from September of twenty-two to May of twenty-three, but we learned that that will continue into the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Again, these auditors are trained by the Texas School Safety Center. The audits are conducted and the results are sent to Austin. And then they are then reported back to the superintendent of the districts. The audits go in three different phases. There's a solo phase where the auditor just approaches a campus. They're not armed or they're not in disguise or anything. Actually, we know what they look like. And by design, it's not to create any angst or anything on the campus. They're just doing the exterior door checks. Then they'll come in Phase Two and do an exterior door audit, which every campus is required to do a weekly audit and have that log in the office. The auditor wants to check that log and wanna have access to that, and that's the Phase Two. And then the Phase Three is an escorted audit where they do about eight to ten classroom door checks to see if our classrooms are actually following our district's requirement of what we asked for the classrooms during the school day. Again, those audit findings are received from the School Safety Center within five business days. And it includes pretty much detailed information about the site visit. And if there are any corrective actions, they'll let us know what they are. We, again, internalize it with their security department and we share it with the campus and take those necessary actions if appropriate. The next thing we'll talk about is some of our interior screenings. And that is we, the board, don't know exactly when it was last year, but you all made a purchase of this OpenGate automatic screening system. And they're a very thorough system. They're efficient. They're portable. You can see them here. Wireless, they're adjustable. We can use indoors and outdoors. And we've got our money's worth with these. And they're app-based. We have roughly ninety of these systems in use across the district at all of our secondary schools and some of our larger special event functions to make that a part of the entry into that event, or the campuses for that matter. And we'll get into some of the House Bill Three requirements. Excuse me. We'll talk a little bit about the Armed Peace Officer requirement on every campus. We'll talk about the security personnel options. We'll talk about TEA and the monitoring and compliance. Some facility standards that Mr. Horn and his team are aware of. The emergency operations plan, which has some new requirements this year. School safety meetings, mental health, and you see the list there. But we'll just touch on each one of these very briefly and then we'll get right into it. So this section of it requires, this section of House Bill Three requires at least one armed security officer be on campus, on each campus during school hours. And that can be a school district peace officer, a school resource officer, or a commissioned peace officer employed as a security personnel. They also allow for this good cause exception. If you can't meet these for either personnel or financial reasons, then you can have this exception to employ a school marshal or a trained district employee such as a school guardian. Our draft plan to cover that includes the SRO contract, which you're familiar with. We're actually working with multiple police municipalities to provide off-duty coverage for our campuses. And you can see the different police departments that we've had conversations with to try to fill this void. We talked about the armed security possibility of contracting an armed security company. We've also talked about the school guardian. This estimated cost for this portion of House Bill Three is about four-point-five million is what we have right at this point. The security personnel, again, in the bill allows for districts to contract with municipalities. It allows for us to also use these armed security companies. And again, we contract with APD and we are considering contracts with those other security personnel companies to provide this armed service for the campus. And everything TEA does, it comes with a compliance piece and a monitoring. And so the TEA has now actually had an Office of School Safety within the agency. And director of that agency is John Scott. And we've personally had conversations with him. He's actually shared his cell phone number with us and he's a great resource and we can reach him whenever we need to. They provide technical assistance to districts, support the implementation of the audits. David Stevens, our director of security, is here. We actually had a meeting a couple of weeks ago over at Region Eleven to meet with them to actually make sure that we are getting our ducks in a row as far as the emergency operations plan and other compliance matters that are with, that are with this bill. Facility standards, basically it's saying that as we move forward, there will be facility standards developed by TEA. And any new buildings that we build must be in alignment with these standards. And then there are also requirements to get any older buildings, which we've done a good job of addressing that. But we have to get those in alignment with the standards as well. If districts have this opportunity, if there is a challenge, then there is an exception for that for the older buildings. But I think we're in pretty good, pretty good shape there. That does give us some time to get in compliance there and it's reviewed every five years. The multi-hazard emergency operations plan, again, we submitted some of this work this past spring. The, we now have what's gonna be required going forward and we're already working on that. Mr. Stevens and his team, again, working with the Region Eleven Service Center to make sure that we are on the cusp of doing it as required by TEA. We'll submit those by the deadlines and we'll receive the feedback and make the necessary adjustments as they are required. Requires some mental health training. And they do say that they will provide an allotment for each district for complying with this. And the State Board of Educators Certification will propose the rules and the requirements for the, for the mental health training for the staff of all people who interact with students on a regular basis. Requires parents of enrolling students to provide school districts a copy of the child's discipline record and any threat assessments that the child has been conducted with. We were kind of ahead of this bill because we were working with other districts to try to do this even before it became a law. It now sets a retention rate for threat assessments until the child's twenty-fourth birthday. And we have a mechanism to make sure that we're in compliance with that. Requires a violent activity notification for parents. And that's basically, TEA is gonna define what a violent activity is. And then they will set the standard and the protocol for how you notify. It must be real-time notification and provided to the parents of those. And we're still trying to understand what, who all that goes to, but we're waiting on that guidance from TEA. And we think we'll be able to be in compliance with that as well. School safety allotment. Heard a financial update earlier and it's just money, money, money. And so they gave us an additional twenty-eight cents for every student. Yay. Ten dollars per student, which is up twenty-eight cents from the previous allotment, plus a fifteen-thousand-dollar per campus, plus an additional funding that is yet to be determined. We really don't know what that looks like yet, but we're trying to wait and get more information as it becomes available. I just wanted to share this last slide before we take any questions. In our Function Fifty-two in our current budget, we have about thirteen-one, thirteen-point-one million dollars that we already budgeted for security. This House Bill Three requirement has forced us basically to add an additional approximately four-point-five million for a total of seventeen-point-one million. As we see it now, we get about one-point-six million dollars from the state, again, plus whatever that other piece that we're not quite sure about what that is yet. But we basically spend sixteen million dollars more than what the state allows us for security. And so I just wanted to kinda share that, that yes, we have a lot of things that are security measures and the district and with the board's support has put the stake out that we're gonna support this financially. But I just kinda wanted to show what it looks like. And again, through the bigger measures of all the security impacts that we have. So at this point, we will be glad to take any questions or open for discussion that we may have.
Do we have any trustees with questions? Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Fowler. Going back to the, I call them metal detectors, but there was a different term used for them, they use for them.
Open gate.
Open gates.
Yes.
We have about ninety systems in use. Is that a sufficient amount? Do we need more of them?
We think that that's enough, but I actually was talking with some principals, a couple of principals today that talked about, you know, because we are requiring it now of every kid at every period, basically, they said that we may need more. We're gonna assess that and see if we could possibly move some from our central facilities. But we think it's enough right now, but it's still early.
About how much do each one of those sets cost?
Do you recall it, David?
I don't. I just remember it was a millions that y'all approved not long ago.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, sir. They're around fifteen thousand dollars each.
Okay.
Yes, sir, for this system.
And are we paying for those out of bond funds or general budget?
We paid for them. I don't know how we paid for them last year.
Broke those to the board out of general operating.
General operating is what they think.
Okay. Are they, I know that there's a safety portion of the nineteen bond. Could bond funds be used for them?
It could be.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Just curious. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, President Fowler. Thank you for the presentation, the information. I wanted to ask an additional question on the OpenGate system. So is that the system, or does that system allow for basically free movable entry in between the two units where it can scan multiple people basically at the same time? Or is that a different type of system?
This is a different system where it's one person through at a time. But it's designed to where we can set the frequency to the level of thickness of a piece of metal that we want it to alert on. And so we, you could, kids can go through it with a cell phone. But if they have a thicker Yeti or something like that, or umbrella, or a laptop computer, it would, we can set the settings to where it would alert on that. But one kid at a time. You don't have to stop. It's just constant walking through.
I, I'm asking that because I, I thought I heard that through the media, which they may or may not have it right, that there was a system that allowed for what I'm talking about. Are you familiar with that type of system? Is that something we've looked at? I'm assuming the cost is even more, but considering the amount of stressors that it puts on the system right now for one at a time going through, I don't know. Maybe it's worth looking at, maybe worth our investment. I was curious about that.
Yes, sir. So there is, there is one particular one that's used here locally at different locations. We have gone and we've checked it out. That cost is over six times more per unit.
Wow.
So it is a significant cost difference.
Okay.
You know, and so that's one of the reasons why we have the device that we have, trying to be physically responsible. And so it's hard to, with as many campuses as we have, it would be a significant taking.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's great. I appreciate that very much. The other thing that I just want to clarify, we have till September one to get everything in place. And this might be for you or Dr. Hill. I'm sure you're Will First. It's my understanding after we reviewed this in our finance committee that unlike what I'm hearing from other districts, again, in the media, that they're asking for waivers, they're probably not gonna meet that September one, they're not gonna make that mark. I want to clarify, it seems like we're gonna be good, right? Or very close to.
We're gonna be, we are working extremely hard to be very close. We're working hard to be there. I don't wanna overpromise and tell you that we'll be there, but I can tell you, promise you that we're working to get there. Again, multiple agencies that we've reached out, I actually got a communication from the deputy chief with Arlington Police Department just earlier this evening, that said that we had more that are filling in. And so we're working to get there.
I mean, would you say an estimate is we're probably, we're probably already ninety percent there?
I would think so, yes.
Yeah, which is fantastic.
Yes.
A huge, heavy lift going into the coordination of this and trying to figure this out. Thank you to both of you for the tremendous work going into this. Yes, it's unfortunate about the dollars that is essentially unfunded, but it's so well-understood.
Yeah.
And supported. So it's, that's definitely not the impediment here. So thank you for all of the coordination. And not just for that, but for all of the layers of security. As you mentioned, these are things that we don't share everything here. There's so many layers that go into it. And I'm looking forward to when we're completely compliant. I'm also curious about the additional funding yet to be determined. I wasn't aware of that as far as coming from the state. As far as I know, their budget's done unless they're gonna somehow sneak it into one of these special sessions. I don't know where that's coming. I don't know that it is coming, quite frankly.
What he's referring to is in the bill itself, there's a phrase in there that basically says one dollar for every fifty part of your ADA of students. So what we're trying to figure out is what does that exactly mean? What you're, what he already referenced in the presentation itself is the call-out specifically of a change of the twenty-eight cents and the fifteen dollars per campus. But then there's a phrase at the very bottom that we're trying to understand what that means and there's not a total amount of clarity around it. So that's what he's referring to.
Gotcha.
All right.
I think that's all we need to see.
Talk about dollars if she comes.
Talk about dollars if she comes.
Just for clarity, our understanding is that that portion of the bill is only if we see an increase in the basic allotment. So if for some reason in October, if we do have a special session and we see an increase in the basic allotment, then we would see those additional funds.
So the additional funds?
It's based on how much that increases.
We're going to take some of the basic allotment and try to plug this hole while maybe not completely plugging the hole that the potential special session is going to cause. That's lovely. Not to be really surprised by that, but thank you very much. And thank you both gentlemen and to the entire team within the district and our external partners as well. It's a Herculean effort. Safety, absolutely, job one, and thank you for hitting the marks. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. Ms. Richardson?
I wanted to tell you, after looking at those slides that we talked about the other day in our meeting, but also now seeing all the layers of security that you talked about, you only talked about three here, and those three are so very important to keeping our students safe, our staff, our administrators. As a parent, I thank you. When I see all these layers that you guys go to protect our district, and you are always thinking 30 steps ahead, just thank you. That's all I want to do, is just tell you thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Anyone?
Thank you both. I think we can all be assured that we're doing our very, very best to keep our students and our staff safe, and we thank you for that, for all of your work, for looking for ways to improve our safety measures. So thank you both so much, you're appreciated. And I know I speak for the entire district when I say thank you to you both. Thank you.
We now come to our open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Forsberg, do we have anyone registered to address the board regarding non-agenda items?
No, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Forsberg. It's now time for the superintendent's report. Dr. Wertz?
All right, so I'd like to share some information about some exciting news that happened since the last superintendent's report at our last board meeting, and as you know, we had a great first day here in Arlington ISD just yesterday, and I'm happy, I was really happy to get out and about at the different schools and see so many different people. I was able to visit several different campuses, and we started greeting students first at Berry Elementary School, and then we ended the day by talking to theater students at Shackelford Junior High School, and honestly, there was just excitement everywhere, it was a really great day. It was wonderful to see many happy students, happy teachers and staff, everyone talking about the opportunity that the district was providing for students this year. And then our first day also drew plenty of attention, as you may have seen on the local media. Ms. Foster and her team did a great job. Arlington ISD's schools were featured on CBS, NBC, Fox, Univision, Telemundo, and all for really good reasons. Four of the stations started out their day bright and early at Berry Elementary. We were there very early. We were there very early. And we also had CBS 11 do its entire morning show live from one of our school buses. They drove right on in in Arlington High, and I want to say thank you to Stacy over at Arlington High and all of the Arlington High crew. They did a great job highlighting Arlington ISD. We also had our PTEC program at Seguin High School spotlighted, met with several students, and all those stories just speak of the awesome people and students that we have here in Arlington. And this all started, as you knew, it kind of grew from a first-day event when we set the tone at the 18th Team Stadium this last week at our Connect Arlington ISD Convocation. It was the first time we were able to bring everyone across the whole district together, and it was a great day made possible by so many people from our finance department, transportation department, marketing and communications team, and a host of volunteers, and we were fortunate enough to have the support of the Dallas Cowboys and the Jean and Jerry Jones family. And you also knew it was going to be a great first day because of how we are, how prepared our teachers were, and that's because of all the preparation that went into getting things ready. Our curriculum instruction department also did a great job with professional learning to have our teachers ready to go. And I personally was fortunate enough to visit many of our secondary and elementary teachers at the district-wide days, and I could see that they were happy and doing great things. And another reason our students were prepared for the first day, which many of us were able to go to, was because of the Ninth Annual Arlington ISD Back-to-School Kickoff that took place at the AT&amp;T Stadium. We were able to provide 10,000 backpacks filled with school supplies, kids got haircuts from peers right here from our CTC, and then we also had vision and dental screening and other resources that families were able to take part of so they could be ready for the very first day of school. And as always, none of this would have been possible without the volunteers that came from our community, our sponsors, and the staff, and they just made it a real great success. So it was an awesome start to the school year, and it's just one day of many great ones to come. So that concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. I can't believe it was just yesterday was the first day.
Yeah.
It just seems like things go so fast, it seems like it was a long time ago now, and it was hours ago. Thank you, Dr. Wertz.
Do I have any trustees with reports? Dr. Raj?
Thank you, President Fowler. Appreciate the report, Dr. Wertz. It's, it's a wonderful district.
Yes.
Wonderful things going on in Arlington ISD for the staff, for the families, especially our students. So thank you for highlighting some of those things. Yes, school started yesterday, and I reached over to Ms. Richardson, and I said, it seems like it's already been a week.
[laughing]
We're just going full steam. The only thing that I wanted to mention, we, my kid's alma mater for elementary school is Pope, and we did what we could as Dad's Club. Oh, yeah, that's great, there's me with the blower, looking great. And I, I'll take a poll if you want me to show up to board meetings like that. So we, no, thank you. Well, that was, that was too fast. So the Pope Dads, the alums, we have, we've been participating in activities for that elementary school for, it's about 18 years now. And so we, we took out the equivalent of a full semi-full, truckload full of brush and debris, cleaned up the campus, and lots of pea gravel, and a special shout-out to one of our alums, who's not in this picture, but Mr. Paul Folks, who donated a ton of materials in his line of work, which I think there's other pictures that maybe, maybe Spence has. There you go. Oh, no, no, there we go. Building excellence is the theme that Pope has, and so the staff there, they were working their hearts out, putting all this stuff together. There's the team putting it together to really make it an inviting place. And it's just, not to toot our horn, but just to show, this is just one example of so many great things going on in our district with our parental involvement, whether it's PTAs, Dad's Clubs, et cetera. So I just encourage anybody that happens to be listening out there, it's only nothing but a fantastic, rewarding experience to impact not just your own children, but all the children of various campuses, and I really encourage that participation. And so that's all I wanted to say. It was a great, great first day there at Pope, as I know it was everywhere else. That's all.
Thank you, Dr. Raj, and I love the idea of this Pope Dads Club and all of you coming back together to still continue, even though your kids are out of college and working, you still come back to help Pope and do what you can. [laughing] But I, but we appreciate it, we really do, that you're willing to still be that involved and get out there with your lovely shorts and your blower thing and doing what you can to make the campus look good. So thank you, Dr. Raj. I want to give a big thank you to Arlington ISD Education Foundation with their help from Awesome Catering of DFW, and that's George Ventura. They provided breakfast to all of the new teachers on the, on the first day of their district orientation, and I just think that is an amazing thing that the Awesome Catering came out and provided that with, of course, the help of the Education Foundation. And then after that, the education, Arlington Education Foundation also provided snacks to all new to the district teachers during their orientation. And I know how much they love the teachers, and we could not function without our Arlington Education Foundation under the wonderful leadership of Jeannie DeKine, and they just do amazing thing for teachers in the district, and I want them to know how much they're And with that, it is 10:13, and we are adjourned.